I'd like to welcome everyone to the Ordinance Committee meeting of the City Council. I am Councilor Large Wind Farwell. I'm the Chair. I recognize a quorum. To my immediate right, I have Counselor Susan DeCastro. To my immediate left, I have Counselor Jeff Thompson. To his left, I have Counselor David Texera. And to his left, I have Counselor Jack Lowly. Legislative Council is Shannon Resnick. I welcome all of you. Thank you for coming out on a cold evening on an important topic. And with that, I would ask, pardon me, the Clerk to read the item on the agenda.
Ordinance. An ordinance to adopt a new section of the zoning ordinance to establish the Fairgrounds Overlay District for Mixed-Use Developments, Commercial and Light Industrial Uses for parcels identified in the ordinance containing approximately 66.685 acres. Invited to attend: Philip Griffin, Ward Three Counselor; Thomas Minicello, Counselor; Robert Sullivan, Mayor or His Designee; Rob May, Director of Economic Planning and Development; Megan Bridges, City Solicitor or Her Designee; Kenneth Galligan, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals; Brian Nardelli, Fire Chief or His Designee; James Burke, Attorney Designee of Copper Mill Development.
So, as the meeting progresses, we'll start off with comments from Counselor Griffin, or Counselor Minicello, or both. Under our ordinances, a person who files an order that appears before the Council, they are allowed to speak first. After that, we will have a presentation from Attorney Jim Burke and representatives from Copper Mill. Following that, we will have questions and answers to Attorney Burke and others from members of the Ordinance Committee. Then we will have comments from our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Rob May. Then comments from Solicitor Bridges, our Her Designee, from the Law Department. Any comments from Attorney Resnick. We have other invited guests, including the Fire Chief, because obviously whatever we do in the city has an impact on public safety services, especially fire services. And I also invited our Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Ken Galligan. He is here and has had decades of experience in zoning, far more than any of us. So with that being said, I would ask Counselor Griffin if you'd like to make any opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Good evening, Counselors. As you know, I'm 100% behind this project. They see it as something that is truly transformative for the city of Brockton. It's 66 acres of land and the fairgrounds, which could dramatically increase our commercial tax base. There's also the possibility of the Belmont Street corridor becoming very, very viable for development, which could double or triple that amount of revenue coming in. And I understand it's going to be a transformative project also. So it's very important that we vet it out thoroughly, and we make sure we do what's best for the citizens of Brockton. And I trust you all will do that. My only ask is that we do this in a manner that is streamlined, with no unnecessary delays. And I'd like to get this through the Ordinance Committee, onto the Council, and then maybe we could start doing some development up there. Because the city right now, as we stand, we need more revenue. No one here would disagree with me with that. And I think this is a good first step in creating a bigger commercial tax base, which we desperately need to fund the projects that we want, the new high school, paying off the new public safety building, just general maintenance for the city in general. This is where I think it really begins, that we start turning Brockton around, and also making it a little bit more development-friendly, that more developers like Andrew will come to Brockton, that are willing to invest between $600 million and $1 billion in our city. I spent seven years as Chairman of the Brockton Redevelopment Authority. I involved in a lot of projects, 93 Center Street, 47 West Delm Street, and they go on and on, the projects that we did. None of them were of the size and scope of this project. So this is really something, I think, that is transformative to the city of Brockton, something that can really lead us into the next century and a good position. And I think it's really incumbent upon us as a group, again, to thoroughly vet this, and to make sure we have the best product for our residents, but we do it expeditiously. I want to thank you very much for having me in tonight and entertaining this, and I look forward to hearing from all of you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselors, I don't see Counselor Minicello, but if he comes in late, I'd like to reserve the right to offer him a chance to say a few words when he appears. That said, I would like to have Attorney Burke and any other individual who wishes to present step forward, and we welcome you. You're certainly not a stranger to Council Chamber.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, members of the Ordinance Committee. My name is Jim Burke, and I'm an attorney-at-law with offices at 48 North Pearl Street. I have the pleasure of having with me today Andrew Flynn, who is the principal of the potential development entity that looks to bring to Brockton a very exciting opportunity. This is extremely unique. We're not here essentially to talk about either my client, the developer, or what his project is. We're rather here to talk about a rezoning of a section within the city of Brockton. The uniqueness of this parcel is incredible. It is hardly repeated within the Commonwealth. You're having roughly 66 acres of land within a short ride, short distance from the central core of the city, with direct access to the interstate modal system and highway system. You don't find that anyplace. It is undeveloped, it's raw, it's open. It has a few essential commercial structures on it now, but otherwise it is immensely open to opportunities. The opportunities can be transformative to the city of Brockton. As somebody who was born and raised in Brockton, I want to make sure that it's done right. We all want to make sure that it's done right. How you get to that point is you have the right people that are driving the bus and moving forward with the development. I'm pleased to say that we have the right opportunity for us today, because Mr. Flynn and his group, which includes some of the, let's say, the most professional and highly sought-after engineers, architects, planners, traffic engineers in the Commonwealth and the Northeast, who have been working on this project on an almost daily basis since we started discussions many, many months ago. I am pleased to tell you, and I'm sure you're already aware, that with the value and the, let's say, the worth of the consultants that are involved, we've already spent over half a million dollars in soft costs getting to this point to try to get a project that is going to be the most transformative and exciting properties and projects that we've had in the city of Brockton for decades. You probably have had the opportunity, and I don't know if you did today, but we've sent some introductory materials in terms of the qualifications of Mr. Flynn and his group. There was a wonderful article today, believe it or not, in Banker &amp; Tradesman, which I think I circulated to some members of the community, which was published throughout the Commonwealth. Banker &amp; Tradesman's probably the preemptive discussion for developers in terms of professional articles, which talked about the exciting opportunities that Mr. Flynn and his group have been involved in, in Somerville, and in Brockton, and in the city of Boston. Currently, they have a project now right by the Boston College High School with the Old Globe. They now have roughly 5,700 units under development in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts right now, and in surrounding states. That's an exciting opportunity. It is an experienced developer who knows exactly what he needs to do to get from point A to point B. It's not a question of looking to rely on others to tell them if he has a viable product. His staff already knows it has a viable product. What the experience and talent of his group does is, they create the pathway to get to the point of profitability, so it works for any individual developer. It also winds up with a project that they are excited about and is complementary to their future endeavors in the real estate business. This is going to be a marriage that will work in the city of Brockton. I am very excited about the opportunity. I'm also excited with the fact that we've had a number of preliminary discussions about the prospects of moving forward with an ordinance and an overlay district that would allow as-of-right development with a melded combination of residential, commercial, light industrial, especially mixed use as part of the residential, so we could create a community within the Brockton Fairgrounds. What I'm excited about is, we've reached that point where we seem to have a focus that exists both between the city of Brockton and the developers, that probably, if we're allowed to proceed, which I trust we will, will result in a final product that we can give to the Commission and the Ordinance Committee in a very short time, that provides a combination of commercial, light industrial, residential, that will allow enough flexibility that an individual developer will be able to secure the very difficult financing, the difficult market, with both hedge fund opportunities, insurance companies, New York bankers. That's exactly the field that he works in every day. He understands what needs to be done. If we wound up getting an ordinance that has review and oversight by the planning board as needed and required, but still allows the opportunity for a banker to look at something, and I'm embarrassed to tell you, you probably already understand, the first question a banker asks is, how do I get my money back? And how do I get paid a profit? It's a very basic blunt exercise. And if they don't see that opportunity, if they don't see the viability of the development, they walk. They may shake your hand on the way out, they may not. But that's the world we live in in terms of capital finance and construction. So, what I ask now is that we have an opportunity to work with the city solicitor. I understand that there are some documents that are pending that modifies the materials that we previously submitted. We're more than pleased to agree on an amendment to suggest before this committee on a final product that would go to the City Council. It might make it even faster, because the Council knows that you have vetted a thorough document, which might make it easier for them to receive and accept and understand the opportunities for the city. I want to let Andrew come up and basically talk with you, his experience and the product that he's intending to present, the benefits it would present. And keep in mind, if we reach this point where this development goes forward, we've already worked out numbers, both on our side and John O'Donnell for the city of Brockton, in terms of the potential revenues received as a result of the build-out of this project. And we think that the impacts that development would cause, while you can't ignore, they're there. They're not going to come close to meeting the opportunities of expanded income, cultural expansion, and giving a success product to the city of Brockton. So the next news story that you read is about the developments going on in terms of progress in the city of Brockton, not questions, concerns, or problems. So, Andrew, if I can?
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Good evening. First and foremost, I just want to thank everybody for taking the time to be here this evening, both members of the committee, as well as members of the public. Certainly, very much appreciate that everybody's taking time out of their personal schedules to be here on a Wednesday evening, especially when it's 20 degrees out in a very, very busy time of year. So, you know, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to all members of the committee. And, you know, as Mr. Burke alluded to, we're here to continue the discussion that has been ongoing and will continue to be ongoing. I just want to make clear that we, myself personally and my whole team, we really approach the Brockton Fairgrounds with a sincere degree of humility, responsibility, and stewardship. We, you know, fully are aware and acknowledge that this is a sacred piece in the city of Brockton. It's kind of a piece that's really going to catalyze and shape the future of Brockton for many decades to come. And I say that not because, I say that because we realize we have to get it right, and that all stakeholders have to be aligned, both at the city level, the community level, the execution, design, engineering, construction, execution level. And, you know, I think accordingly, that's why we've taken a very deliberate and measured approach to this. I will say, I really try not to let my business and personal endeavors converge. This is a, this is a, one of the few unique situations where they certainly have converged. My mother grew up on Bassett Road, she attended West Junior High, she went to Cardinal Spelman, we still have family in the area, and so Brockton is a place that is very, in a very sincere way, it's near and dear to me, and I want to get it right. And we realize that the Brockton Fairgrounds are really the connective tissue that not only stitches three wards together, but really bridges, you know, the front door of Brockton with the downtown of Brockton. Obviously, it's adjacent seat to the high school, but also there's a lot of moving parts. There's the residential fabric along Thurber Ave, there's the Belmont Corridor, which we've, you know, we've talked about and will continue to. And it's really a Rubik's Cube, and we got to make sure that we take all those mosaic pieces and get it right. You know, accordingly, you know, we've been engaging with different stakeholders in the city for almost a year now. I'm very grateful to Mr. May, who, you know, has spent a lot of time with us over the past year, particularly last spring. And the first time I met Mr. May, I said to him, I said, "You know what? I need to earn your trust and credibility." I, you know, I understand inherent skepticism with developers. Unfortunately, over decades and decades, both in greater Boston and beyond, they have earned a really poor reputation, and rightfully so. You know, there's a lot of developers who will come in, they'll shove a project down a neighborhood's throat, there'll be menaces during construction, they'll, you know, leave a path of destruction in their wake and get back on their plane to New York, and they don't really care about the derivative impacts it has on the city. You know, while we certainly aren't perfect, we take the opposite approach. We are not trying to operate in the shadows. We are here, I think many in this room can attest, you know, and I will continue going forward. I'm here and happy to meet with anybody in this room and beyond at any time. Our office is right in Boston. I can be down here in a half hour on an hour's notice. And, you know, I think we want to continue that spirit of transparency and proactive engagement and constructive engagement. Again, there are a lot of moving parts on this, and we've got to get it right. I've been very grateful to everybody at the city and in the community who's spent time with us over the past year. You know, Mr. May, with, you know, probably nearly a dozen meetings, members of the Council, Chief Nardelli, Chief Perez, Mr. Hill at DPW, Superintendent, my team and I had the opportunity to spend a full day with Principal McCaskill at Brockton High, which was really inspiring, and we were very inspired by him and all the good energy he was bringing to Brockton High, along with Ms. Bridges, Ms. Resnick, the assessor, the CFO, Mayor Sullivan, and kind of everybody in between, along with, you know, various members of the community. And we had a great time at the Cape Verdean Gala, but even more, you know, I was, and I guess, I'm not here to convince you that I care, but I guess I'll have to ask you in a few years if you think I care. You know, this Sunday, I was down here with Eliza Wilson, who's a community member, and spent a couple hours with her, hearing her latest perspective on, you know, what's going on in the city, and maybe how the Brockton Fairgrounds can have a positive impact. So, you know, I think we've certainly endeavored to engage in good faith over the past year. You have my personal commitment, we will continue to do so. I have seven members of my executive management team here tonight, you know, across all disciplines, project management, field operations, finance, construction, design, public engagement, among others. We all sit in Boston, we are all folks from greater Boston, natives of greater Boston. We want to see what's best. We know that there's a lot of commitment to housing and other uses, including, you know, potential R&amp;D and light industrial. As we've seen, the governor of the state, you know, passed a very meaningful housing bill in the past couple of months. There's also a lot of other, you know, really positive tailwinds for economic development, especially in the state's largest cities, including the city of Brockton. I will say, as with regards to the fairgrounds in particular, you know, as I refer, I'm a history nerd at heart. I love the history of the fairgrounds, from when it was an agricultural application to more of, you know, the racing identity, to more of the carnival identity, and all the other experiences that residents of Brockton, you know, present, past, and future have shared on the fairgrounds, and that's not lost on us. And we certainly want to find a way to kind of harness and harvest the history of the fairgrounds. But, and with all due respect to the Carney family, I think, you know, the existing conditions on the fairgrounds, I don't want to, you know, speak on anyone's behalf, but I don't think they're really, you know, the 66 fallow acres are not really generating much in the way of kind of positive derivative impacts in the surrounding, you know, surrounding the parcel and surrounding the city. We realize that it's a very large parcel, it needs to be done in a thoughtful way, and it's not as if we can just go develop all 66 parcels, you know, or sorry, all 66 acres, you know, in the next 24 months. It's something that'll take, you know, many years, and it'll be done in a sequence that will be partially market-driven, partially, you know, driven by other factors. But you have my personal commitment, we're here to see that through. You know, I appreciate some of the kind words, you know, Mr. Burke said, you know, we're folks who, we just, we're somewhat under the radar, we keep our head down, but to the extent any of the committee members would like to speak to any of the elected officials in the city of Boston, city of Somerville, other large stakeholders in the greater Boston area, I think and I hope you would find that, you know, we've earned a strong reputation for being, you know, folks of our word, being folks, not trying to be overly altruistic about it, but folks who want to do the right thing. And it doesn't mean we always get it right. And I think, and folks who see things through, and who are actually, we have the stomach, we have the horsepower, we have the acumen, and we have the team to actually see things through and get stuff done. And while this is my own internal team, you know, as Attorney Burke alluded to, we're working with CBT Architects, Bowler, Halian Aldrich, Feldman, Mr. Burke, along with Nixon Peabody, and, you know, we do that because we want best-in-class folks focused on a best-in-class outcome. And so I think all I would ask, very respectfully and humbly of, you know, of the city, everybody from, you know, the mayor's office on down, everybody who's treated us with great, you know, grace and respect and receptivity to date, is, you know, we, time is of the essence. That doesn't mean we need to wave a magic wand and get this done in the next week, but, and I know the holidays always slow things down a little bit, but I think, you know, we've really been putting our shoulder into this over the past year. I can tell you, really, every day per week, I was going to say five days a week, but really seven days a week, one of our team members is here, either on the fairgrounds, meeting with different stakeholders, and that's because we're excited about the project and we want to see it done the right way. And all I would ask in the next, in the coming weeks and the next couple of months, is just a degree of reciprocity in terms of engagement. And I think, you know, one of the challenges for us is, we've had so many great conversations with so many different groups that I've referenced, whether it's members of the Council, members of the mayor's office, you know, and everybody in between, you know, top to bottom, left to right. And I think one of the things that's just, probably started to fatigue the process in recent months, is those all feel very disparate and bespoke. And I think all we would ask is to kind of converge this discussion in a way that can, you know, be a linear process. It doesn't mean, you know, we're believers in process, it doesn't have to happen overnight. But I think, you know, we have found ourselves in different arenas where one person says this, we go do it, then the next person says, "Why'd you do that?" And so all I would ask, I think, you know, we come to this with an acknowledgement of the sanctity of the site, and a desire and a commitment to get it right. And I think we really just ask that the city find a way to coordinate its various stakeholders and its various disciplines, and kind of engage with us in a cohesive way, because that's the only way we're going to be able to get it right. And we can't have it be an asymmetric discussion, or a discussion that is so decentralized, you know, with all these little proxy discussions. So, you know, I think we're very appreciative of all the different elements inside City Hall, outside City Hall, you know, the Old Colony Planning Council, we met with the Chamber as well. I mean, we've loved it. And again, it doesn't mean we walk into every room and expect to just be, you know, welcomed with open arms. We want tough questions, we understand tough questions, and we want to give real answers and thoughtful answers and honest answers. And sometimes it's an easy answer, sometimes it's, "Hey, we got to go do some engineering work." And other times, it's, you know, "We understand your concern, but for a certain reason, you know, let us just explain to you why that's challenging for us." And I think all we would ask is a cohesive forum, because what we have found towards, you know, especially over the course of October, November, December, is, we would kind of do X, and then Y, and then, you know, certain folks would go dark on us for a couple of weeks. And, you know, even a good example, I know Counselor Falwell, you and Counselor Minicello were kind enough to sponsor that public meeting at West Junior High in October, and I think, I don't want to speculate on anyone's behalf, but I think folks thought it was maybe going to be a hostile meeting, and I actually think it was very positive. And folks asked good questions, but constructive questions, and I think the consensus is, folks want to see the right thing done there.
It was actually Counselor Griffin. I don't want to steal his thunder, so...
Griffin, sir. I don't want to leave you out. Sorry. But I'll just say that, so we're here, we've been at it for a year, we understand there's more wood to chop, but, you know, we just would ask for reciprocal engagement in a cohesive fashion. That's my one request of this committee, and of the Council, and of, you know, all stakeholders at City Hall. So thank you for your time, I'm sorry for the long-winded kind of context, but, you know, thank you very much, and I look forward to continuing to work with all of you.
Before I turn it over to Counselors, could we, could we just, tell us where we are now with respect to number of units and any changes from the West Middle School presentation? That's all. I think that'll give us some context or a frame of reference.
I don't think there's any significant changes, and I think this needs to be more thoroughly dealt with, but the original proposal for the residential, and when you say units, I think you're probably talking about residential. The original proposal was in a more restricted area for residential. It isn't that we were preventing, but the idea or the concept of an overlay in which there was a marriage of commercial and light industrial. The residential piece had 1,500 units, plus, if there were any additional units, it would be secured by a special permit through the planning board. However, the most recent discussions in which there was a suggestion of removing a section for the possibility of industrial, thereby changing, so the concept of the development, wound up with a much bigger space of residential than it had before it had been considered as a possibility by the developer. The net result was, the number of units contained within the second alternative language that we presented was 2,500 units. And again, the reason for the increase is because there was a lot more land now that was being discussed as being within the residential.
Thank you. Counselor Ellie, did I see your hand, or was that Counselor Texera?
No.
Either one of you?
I think you're seeing things, Counselor.
Well, I, what I wanted to do is give all of you an opportunity to ask questions now, rather than wait until the end, because unless I take copious notes, sometimes I forget a question that I want to ask that I think is relevant. So if you don't have any questions of Andrew or Attorney Burke, we can go on to our Director of Planning and Economic Development. It's whatever the will of the committee is.
I'd like to do it after we get everybody.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from everyone.
All right. We'll hear from everyone then. Mr. May, you are front and center, please.
Good evening, Counselors. For the record, Rob May, I'm Director of Planning and Economic Development for the I wanted to say that it's been a very productive relationship that we've had with Mr. Flynn and his organization. We've met very early on in this process and have crafted, I think, what is a first-rate proposal here in Brockton. We have shared some drafts of a potential development agreement that would then solidify that vision, with a lot of wiggle room still in it, but would solidify the, where we were heading in the process. For example, there were things in the development agreement that has been shared with you as a draft, that there is a maximum number of units, and at this point, I'd said, you know, up to 1,400. That a certain percentage of them be for sale, that a certain percentage of them be affordable, that there are certain design standards that need to go into the development of that property. The current overlay district has a maximum height that covers the entire parcel at 6... a, uh, maximum height that covers the entire parcel at six stories, if I remember. I don't want to, oh, seven stories, excuse me. Um, but that doesn't take into, uh, any sensitivities of the, the Thurber Avenue and the need to, Thurber Street, excuse me, the need to ramp up away from that neighborhood and protect the single-family homes there. Um, there's also the question of, there will be improvements that need to be made, both on and off-site. And who should foot those bills? Um, a lot of this property, or a lot of this development that's off-site could be eligible for state and federal funding, but there's the design of that material, uh, those intersections that, that need to be done. Um, and that should be a shared expense. Um, lastly, um, I think we've heard several discussions of, of it's going to be all commercial, it's, or it's all going to be, um, residential. And, and I've got to say, I would be very disappointed if we lost any of that, um, tech campus. Um, it is, um, there is a very high demand for industrial space here in, in the city. Uh, if you look at, um, the, the spec building that was produced at 105 Industrial Boulevard, uh, in Ward Four, uh, who would have thought that somebody would have invested, uh, money to build a three-hundred-thousand-square-foot spec building? Um, over the year that it's been complete, um, two-thirds of that property have already been leased out, um, creating jobs. And, um, I've got to say, and, and nothing against Ward Four, that is a very difficult neighborhood to develop in because of where it's located and how far it is from the expressway, how, uh, vehicles have to travel through, uh, residential neighborhoods to get there, and how much better a location the fairgrounds are for, um, up to five-hundred-thousand square feet of, of tech campus, of very regulated tech campuses to what we want. Um, and I think that that is something that is very achievable. Um, the last week, I've had a conversation with the, the Chair of the Committee and, uh, have prepared, um, some maps that are on your, uh, desks right now, but the first map shows all the, uh, parcels that are, um, controlled within the fairgrounds property and the, the development areas. You can see how the site is broken up. Uh, there's a lot of-
Hey, would you just suspend for a minute? I'd like to ask BCA to, uh, if they would, if they would put up on the screen for the people watching at home exactly what we're talking about. These are all, thank you, BCA. Those red lines delineate the various parcels that constitute the sixty-six acres, if I'm correct. And then we can go on to the one with the buffer zone, uh, and any other-
Um, yes, sir.
Ones that you might cite. So, thank you.
A conversation that I, that we've had internally is, um, how do we get the ball starting and what might be a, a first step in getting to a final rezoning of this whole property? And one of the areas that we're looking at is, and I'm sorry, I have topics for you guys. Hang on, is it there? Thank you. We're on page two right now. Um, the area around Thurber Ave. Um, this is an area that Copper Mill has proposed having, uh, townhomes or small, you know, one, two, three-bedroom units. And, um, if you look at this area, it, um, the yellow is a hundred-and-fifty feet from the center line of Thurber, um, deep. And I think that that might be an area that we would want to move forward with, um, in the very near future. And I would recommend that, you know, we have existing zoning in Brockton, that is the, um, R2 district, that if we were to, um, rezone this area for R2 and make some additional changes to the R2 to make it more, um, appropriate for, um, Copper Mill to, uh, be able to build there. Uh, as, as you remember, our zoning ordinance was produced in nineteen sixty-five and is a little bit outdated. Um, but with some tweaks to the R2 district, we might have a first step in getting a shovel in the ground, showing Copper Mill that we are acting in good faith, and show the development community that we are at least moving forward in this process. Um, to give you a better idea of what that area looks like with the property lines, we have a third map. This is something that if, if we were to work with the developer to create a subdivision map, um, and showing where the lot lines are with a meets and bounds, their, uh, meets and bounds can be translated into a zoning ordinance, and, uh, we can make, uh, any necessary tweaks to, um, the R2 district. And if I gotta pull my notes up fast, fast, um, the, the changes that I would want to see made to R2 is that the lot area per unit is five-thousand square feet. The, um, minimum frontage or width of the lot would be fifty feet instead of a hundred. That, um, and that all the other, um, uh, the two-car parking, the setbacks, the height of three feet, uh, three stories, parking in the rear, all of those stay because this is a very low-density district that's adjacent to single-family homes. And we want to keep it that way. But this allows for a little bit more density as you start ramping up into the larger development project. Um, but again, uh, I think before we really get too far into rezoning the rest of the district, we really should have, uh, a development agreement between the city and the developer. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
All right. I think, uh, I think the will of the committee is to wait until the end.
Thank you, sir.
And we will, uh, ask our honorable solicitor to come up. And Attorney Verdi, if you want to join her, it's up to you. Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. How are you? Happy New Year. It's only the eighth, so I think it's still okay to say it. But, um, so, um, sorry, I was a little bit late. Um, and you, you just heard from Rob. And so I want to kind of, um, structure my comments with two main objectives, to talk to you about a development agreement and what that means and what, why it's important for the project. And also, um, I think to provide a little bit more texture on where we were and how we got to where we are now. So I'll keep the comments brief, but I'll start with the second point first. Um, in, sometime in the summer, there was a zoning ordinance submitted that covered the breadth of the almost sixty-seven acres that is the fairgrounds. And it provided for a myriad of uses under the current zoning code, um, without a lot of specifics. Rob's office specifically has been working very diligently with the developer on refining what the proposal could look like and how to achieve the objectives. Recently, the conversations have shifted more to, um, kind of how Rob described. What can, how can we break this up? How can we sequence it so that we can start with something sooner rather than later? And what does it make sense to start with? So what, part of what the city administration is bringing you tonight is, um, the concept that it makes sense to start with residential. And it makes sense to start with, um, a large number of units that are, uh, multifamily dwellings because of what's been in the news for everyone lately is a lack of, of access to housing, a lack of affordable housing. So, um, there are a few different maps floating around. I do not have one. But another version of the map that's up here that Rob is showing you, um, suggests that the residential development be everything in this area as opposed to this section on the side. Um, so I think those types of specifics are what is outlined in a development agreement. Um, and so that kind of is a nice segue into some comments I wanted to offer in a development agreement. And the city, um, what's interesting here is the city doesn't own the parcel. The city will never own any of the parcels, at least as contemplated in the, the type of partnership that is structured currently. Um, so a development agreement creates, um, rights, responsibilities, and roles between the municipality, between the property owner, who in this case is not the developer, and the developer, and any potential successors or assigns. And why those things are important is because, uh, they're a very good tool to utilize for planning purposes. I'm sure you've heard plenty of this type of information from Rob before, but this is a, this is a unique opportunity. It's an exciting opportunity. It's a huge parcel of land. And a development agreement really gives the municipality the chance to engage in the development at an arm's length to provide for the citizenry and the users of the community. Um, so some of the provisions or contents would certainly be descriptions of the project, uh, conditions from other municipal departments, project mitigation, public benefits. What you'll see in a, in an amended draft of the ordinance for your consideration, you know, is the concept of green space being, um, a required part of the project, um, a development agreement being a required part of the project, the number of units that could be built by right without, um, additional approval, uh, what the dimensions of those agreement, what the dimensions of those, um, dwellings would be. Um, so all of that would be referenced in development agreement also. The sources of funding and costs, action items for the municipal, for the municipality, and then what happens if things don't go how everyone wants. Um, so we, the city has used versions of land use agreements in other projects, but, um, we've called them disposition agreements because the city has owned the parcel. So this is a little bit different. Um, and then just a couple, two final points. Um, if the city changes the zoning without a development agreement, then the city loses its opportunity to shape and impact the development. And lastly, um, we live very close to Quincy. We live close to Somerville, um, not so close to Worcester, but Quincy, Somerville, Worcester, Chelmsford, all, you know, have development agreements for complex types of development like this with a private developer. And sometimes there's three and four and five parties. And I'm not suggesting we need to get like that, but I am saying that these types of developments are complex. There are quite a few stakeholders at the table. And every, everyone needs to be on the same page to ensure the project's success. So that's really kind of the goal. It's a, it's, it's for everyone. Um, so those are the majority of my comments. Um, I, with regard to the project pivoting to focus on residential in order to make significant progress, um, Attorney Burke provided some amendments to the original draft that we got on Monday. My office turned them around, um, this morning, uh, kind of, uh, creating a marriage of the Thatcher Street zoning, which is high-density housing, not including a forty-R overlay, um, to the original zoning proposal that was filed with the focus on residential. So I would suggest that you all, um, should receive it and then review it. And then we can talk, could talk about it in more detail if you desired. But that is the current status of the situation from July till now, with a lot of pieces left out certainly, but this is kind of where we're at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief Nadelli.
Chief, I didn't add you to the, uh, the list because I think you have nothing to do. The fire department's been very busy on some sad issues and then some firefighting issues. But, but given the fact that a densely populated area presents unique challenges to the fire service, it was my belief that we would want to hear from you as to any thoughts you might have about what we might want to put into a project development agreement or any special challenges that they present to you, so that we'd have a full picture on exactly what we'd be doing with respect to the need for the fire service and the station that actually is right across the street where your office is. So with that in mind, that's why you're here. And I'll, please, offer whatever comments you wish.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Happy New Year to all. Um, quite a while ago, back in the spring, I received some information about what was going to go on with this project. Um, and quite honestly, at the very beginning, I was, I was quite skeptical because of its, it was pretty vague. It was, it was concerning in regards to our operation and how we operate throughout the city. And I would need more specifics. So I, I relayed that, that information to, to the city solicitor, to some of you folks. Um, at that time, though, um, Mr. Flynn had reached out and wanted to come in and meet. And we had a nice meeting in my office with him and his team. And I laid those same concerns out to him that morning that I, that I had relayed to others. And, and some of those concerns were, um, about the type of buildings that were going in, um, how far apart they would be spaced. Um, one of the things that needs to be understood with these type of buildings that Mr. Flynn is, is, is looking to develop, or it's called podium-style construction. And, um, they're being built everywhere. They're being right, built right down here in downtown Brockton here. My concerns are, it's usually, um, iron and steel on the first floor, and above that is like a forest. It's all wood. So some of the, um, separations between those buildings were concerning. The wide, the breadth of the roads was concerning. In my business, we look at any fire break possible. If you look at Pacific Palisades right now, now that's not, nothing like the City of Brockton or anything in this area in the Northeast. But our mindset goes towards that. If there is some catastrophic event in those buildings with a conflagration, we have to reduce that conflagration hazard. And by widening those berths is very important. Other, uh, concerns that I had were, um, things such as, as, as drive-through streets. Um, I, and nothing, and we're, we're seeing them more in the city now as we become more sparse with, with land. We are seeing more cul-de-sac type areas. Um, and but I, you know, I, I expressed to him and his team that we wanted to see more of a drive-through style operation through the entire project. Now, that's not going to be possible in some areas, and we understand that. One of the biggest concerns, and, and I spoke, um, at length to him and his team about, was the, the water mains and the water, the water supply system in there, especially with having not only residential, but also the commercial and industrial. One of the greatest assets, and I think a lot of people don't realize that, that is a thirty-inch water main that runs along Thurber Avenue. That is a road that, you know, partially is not even paved, but it is a thirty-inch water main. Why is that important? Because my concern was, could we draw the water off of that water main to bring it into the entire complex? And when it comes into that complex, it couldn't dead-end. It would have to be gritted out to Forest Avenue, Belmont Street, back around into the Thurber Avenue water main. So those are some of the deepest concerns I had right out of the gate. What I have to tell you, after the meeting we had that morning, they were amenable to everything I spoke about. They understood the importance of it. They understood the importance of public safety. I thought it was a very fruitful meeting. I was able to understand what they were trying to accomplish, as well as they were able to now see my side of it from a public safety perspective. Some of the things we talked about with the commercial and the residential and the, um, industrial all clumped together. I had some deeper concerns about that, um, mainly because of, of what was going to go on in those facilities, and we don't know right now. So I would want a lot of the residential somewhat separated from the industrial. Obviously, that's not going to happen in the commercial that much. And they completely understood that. A lot of the green space that the solicitor has spoken about and as well as, uh, Mr. Flynn's team would also work a lot towards our, our, our buffering of keeping these buildings further apart. Um, code sets a distance of ten feet. I asked if we could go upwards of twenty feet. If these are going to be six- and seven-story buildings, as they get higher, these are going to be fully sprinkled buildings. But I think one of the things we have to understand, though, is on the outside of those buildings, there is sheathing and a number of other things where it is not sprinkled. So we have to reduce those. And if this, if we can separate them more, that would be great. And again, Mr. Flynn and his team were amenable to everything we spoke on. We've actually talked a few times since. He's asked me different other concerns I had of, of some other small things that we discussed. Um, and I think it worked out well. I think where my skepticism started early, that I was concerned about with the vagueness of it, I think we were able to, although this is a moving plan, and we all know that, and, and, and real estate will dictate how this plan goes, I think they really do understand my concerns on the public safety side of things, which, which is, which is nice to hear, because that's not always the case. So we had a very good meeting. I think we've spoken since then. Um, and he is on board with my concerns and, and has basically said, as we move forward, I'm going to want you involved in how we get this done, which I think will work out very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Gallagher.
My, my comments to Chief Nadelli are also directed at you. I, you have a busy life. You have devoted decades and decades of service- You have a busy life, you have devoted decades and decades of service to this city. You've also refereed and, and tried to handle a lot of different zoning issues that have come up through the ZBA. And I just wanted you to have an opportunity to address the ordinance committee as we wrestle with what we want to do so that we create an ordinance that doesn't generate a lot of work for the zoning board of appeals and it reflects the type of vision that, that we would want for the city. So if you have any comments, I, I'd like to hear them.
Well, good evening. I'll keep my comments brief. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. As you know, I've been on the zoning board for over 30 years and I also wear another hat in the traffic commission. I've been there for over 30 years. I guess you would have to look at this whole project at the fairgrounds as a one-time, one-time opportunity to make a significant development in the city. And I appreciate the fact that you're spending a lot of time to make sure that if this happens, it's done properly. If you do an overlay for that piece of property up there, I would hope that whatever goes on, on that site will not require frequent visits to the zoning board to approve different parcels or whatever wants to go there. I would presume that probably the planning board will have a major role in making some of those decisions. But I think if you look at this carefully with an overlay and you as elected officials decide what you want that parcel to look like, we could have a pretty smooth transition from what we have up there now to what I think all of us would like to see at the fairgrounds. My concern, as far as zoning is concerned, is relative to setbacks of buildings from the streets. Obviously, parking is a huge issue. I would hope that those issues are addressed thoroughly. Parking can become a real problem if there is not sufficient parking allotted for what is going to be in there. You don't want to create a situation where parking now becomes mandatory on roads that are going to traverse through this piece of property. You would hope that whatever parking is provided can be provided in an area that is designed for parking and it doesn't overload itself out into the streets. The setbacks of the buildings, as a Brocktonian, my preference obviously would be to see the building set back from the street with some green space in the front. That would certainly make it aesthetically pleasing as you drive by this property. On the traffic side of the issue here, I, I think some serious consideration has to be given also to the streets that are surrounding this property, particularly Belmont Street, West Street, Forest Avenue. We all know the situation up there when the high school is getting in and out. There's definitely going to have to be traffic signals put on Forest Avenue, perhaps at West Street. The area in front of the library is an area that's going to have to have serious consideration on traffic movement. One thing that really makes traffic back up both on Belmont Street and on Forest Avenue is left-turn lanes. The lack of left-turn lanes, one car that wants to make a left turn can tie up traffic. So I think, again, Forest Avenue, the high school, left-turn lanes, that area in front of the, the library at West and Forest Avenue, that's always been a problem. It's going to have to be looked at. And the access roads as they come out of this project onto the main thoroughfares, whether it be Forest Avenue or Belmont Street, that really has to be considered as part of what's going to be inside of this property. Now, I have not been involved in a lot of the conversations on this. I was asked to come tonight, so I'm only expressing some of the things that I see from both a zoning issue and from a traffic issue. It is unique in Brockton that oftentimes we say, where do you live? I live in Campello, I live in Montello, I live on the east side. Wouldn't it be unite, unique to say, I live at the fairgrounds? And this area in the fairgrounds can become a small city unto itself. And when you design this, when you do the overlay for this, I think it's very important to consider what amenities are going to be part of this, how it's going to affect the surrounding properties. And as I mentioned, the movement of traffic on Belmont Street, Forest Avenue, West Street is going to be critical. So I would appreciate a good overlay so that we don't see these people before zoning on a constant situation of looking for this and that as far as zoning is concerned. But I think if you give it a good thought, some serious considerations on an overlay, most all of the problems I think that would come up could be addressed with what's in that overlay. So with that, I think that's about all I want to have to say tonight. And I appreciate the fact that you invited me in. And as a Brocktonian, I wish them good luck. The fairgrounds needs to be developed and that is the area. When you come off 24, it's welcome to Brockton. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, we don't have any other invited guests. Who would like to seek recognition for any questions or comments or? Go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I think it's been plainly stated that the development of the fairgrounds and the orderly and proper development of this property is really vital to the future of the city of Brockton. We have to get this right. We really only have one shot at this. And so these discussions are extremely important to make sure that we do get it right. And Mr. Flynn, I think in your conversation about cohesion, right? It seems that we've had 30 different groups or small groups working on this issue. It doesn't seem that there's, you know, a point at the top of the pyramid that's really driving this from the city side. I do see that the mayor was invited today and he's not here today, or his designee. Is anybody here as the mayor's designee?
I, I think the solicitor has had conversation with him and is filling in.
I think, you know, I, I think having, having somebody at the top kind of directing this process would help with the, with the cohesion issue. You're dealing with a legislative body. We all have kind of different ideas and, you know, not, and so usually, you know, you have somebody at the top, an executive, that's kind of keeping his eye on everything. And so I think if, you know, that it would be, we could address some of the cohesion issue, you know, if we, if, if we had somebody really driving this process. But on that cohesion issue or on, there's been the original, the, the original drafted overlay. And I think we all knew from the beginning that that original overlay would not be the final product. And then once we got that, got that on the books, we had a basis or a foundation to, to begin from. And then, as you said, you've had multiple conversations from, from probably everyone up here, the ward counselor, you mentioned everybody that you talked to, and like you said, small groups. And what that's really produced in, in front of me is kind of four or five different amended, you know, amended overlay drafts. And so I don't, I don't even know what I'm working off of right now. And so do we, do we have a current working draft in which, which is the foundation of future discussions that take into account all of these discussions that we've had over the last few months?
Counselor, there are two. And, and I provided the, the law department and Attorney Resnick, who would be the point people for me as, as attorneys? One was a modification from the early days when, when the concern was that the original overlay language for the ordinance was too broad. I acknowledge that. I, I think the developer here always thought it was going to be a process of negotiation that would be more direct and continuous. It, it seemed to quiet down for a significant period of time. The net result is, I created a modification and submitted it to under the original overlay district, which included light industrial, commercial, residential. That has been there at least since September. There was more frequent discussions and, and you know, as a legislative body, there are 11 different opinions on what is best, and that's not a bad thing. But it made it more difficult to find a process of moving forward, a pathway. There was some discussion about focusing because of the mayor's pri, excuse me, the mayor and the governor's prioritization of housing and its needs in the Commonwealth to address the housing issue first and then deal at some later state with the industrial. As a result, I created a modified ordinance that dealt solely with that, and that's been circulating for roughly about a week or two. So there are two items before you, but to answer the question you asked, I have not seen the work on a modification yet that would include the language that the city solicitor suggested. I, I'm sure it's going to be given to me shortly. At that point in time, we will digest it and be able to respond more directly, but there is nothing finalized for you to look at right now.
Okay. And, and that's, as you said, that's a current situation we're in. I'm confused about the removal of the industrial, commercial area and replaced with the increased residential. Where did that come from and why?
I, I can't say there was a point person. I can, I can suggest there were comments that it, it might be more acceptable to the legislative body if we addressed this priority first. The, as you can imagine, after a year, the developer wants to get a shovel in the ground. And even if it would require another process to get to the industrial, it was important for this developer to either get going or get gone so that we were more than receptive to the possibility of dealing with the residential in a different way. And, and as a result, if, and I think I made a, an email in which I, I think submitted to yourself and, and many members of this committee, which basically suggested, we're happy proceeding in any reasonable way that works in the best interest of the city that the council secures and would rather proceed. We believe that it clearly makes the most sense to have the industrial, the commercial, the two different tax bases. The way it was designed, and I think it was done very talented, in a very talented way, you have a, a core of the industrial on the northern side of the parcel to address some of the concerns that the planner mentioned always in our discussion in terms of the early designations. There was going to be a buffer, a natural buffer between Thurber Avenue and the industrial section. It also suggested that if we did proceed with one of the possibilities, which is a significant possibility, of townhouses along the Thurber Avenue, which would require the road to be continued and created, there would still be a buffer between those units and the, the residential and the industrial. So we've always anticipated that those necessary modifications as part of the development process would take place.
Well, I would say that the original plan or the original overlay with the, I agree with you, with the residential, industrial and commercial, you know, mixed use on that property is, is probably the best way to go forward to, you know, add 1,000 additional units. You know, I don't, I don't think, I don't think I could support a residential-heavy development. I think that the, the plan as it originally exists, or at least what was presented, that, that has an industrial base on, on this property and a commercial base, I think is, is in the best interests of the city. That is the, I think, the highest best use for those areas. I think what Brockton needs to do is position itself for the future. We have a, you know, we have a new administration coming in that, that speaks often about onshoring different industries into the country. I think Brockton should position itself to be able to, you know, acquire some of those onshored industries. And, you know, by, by reducing any industrial parcels to increase our residential parcel, I think is, is not a wise way forward. So just one man's opinion, one of 11, I, I think we should keep the 100, the 1,500 units as previously stated and make sure that we identify exactly what type of commercial that we would like here in the city. I think when I look at one of the drafts, it speaks about commercial from the C1 to the C7, or excuse me, C8. And if we could, if you could remind me, C, is C8 athletic, like the, the stadium?
It was the, yes.
I mean...
That's, that's C7.
Seven?
That's C7.
Okay. Is that something that, is that something that you're contemplating? No? Okay.
You know, there's great flexibility in narrowing that down.
And I think that's kind of where some of this conversation needs to be had. And, and this is the forum to do it, not multiple individual conversations. I think we, as you said, we all need to get together, get all the players in the room. And, and this is probably the forum in which to do it, do it in a public manner to start identifying what, what is it out of the commercial that we want? What is it out of the industrial that we want? What don't we want? And get it on paper. And, and I know that process has started through one of these redlined drafts. It removes some of the obnoxious uses of, of auto, auto sales, auto body workshops, auto repair, boat sales, tattoo parlors, you know, stuff like that. I think within, with, even within, and, and I don't remember, I don't have all the C zones out in front of me, but, you know, essentially, one of these zones allows for, you know, adult entertainment, you know? I don't think that's something that we want on this property. And I think those are conversations that we need to have and start putting it on the paper. And I, and I think this is the forum in which to do it. It just doesn't seem we're ready to, we don't have the proper foundation to build off of to, to begin these conversations. But I, I think I would like to have a discussion of what it is the city wants, what is it that we don't want and start, you know, identifying it and writing that down. And that's also true of our I zones. You know, the, the I1, I2 are a little, a little, a little more light, your I3 going to a heavier industrial uses. I know there are some identified, like boat sales or, or, you know, boat services that have been identified and kind of crossed out. I think we need to continue that conversation. The, the fire chief came up and started talking about distances. I do see in one of these drafts that the, the discussion of increasing the side setbacks to 20 feet is in this. And so I think it seems like a lot of these conversations have been had. Some of these redlined, this overlay includes them. I just think we need to kind of continue to push this matter, this process forward. I'm not completely opposed to, let's say, let's identify the residential, let's come up with a good residential district, let's get that passed, and let's get shovels in the ground. I think, you know, I would support that. But I think if we just work together, we could probably get a full overlay done in a, in a pretty speedy amount of time if we all just kind of, again, sit down together as a larger group and take all of these concerns, you know, you know, into, into focus. What else? The community agreement. So that was something that's been discussed and I, and I believe it's something that's important that we, that we have. My, my question is, when, at what point does that community agreement, when do we enter into that? into that agreement? Because if we're piecemealing it, I would imagine we'd have piecemeal agreements. I know in one of these drafts, we talk about an agreement to enter into agreements, essentially, that no building permits would be drawn without a developer agreement happening, you know, prior to those building permits, and we can negotiate some agreement at that point. Can we get some feedback? I mean, we're hearing master agreement, then we're hearing individual agreements. When do you believe is the proper time to enter into those agreements? And should there, should there, at this stage in the process, be that agreement to get into an agreement instead of some overarching master agreement?
I can tell you, from the developer's perspective, it's not the time to enter into an overlay agreement, where it is still so new and so raw. What will happen, and it's not a great surprise, we probably will appear before the planning board, and we will separate some parcels. And it may be that there is another designated developer for a specific parcel, take the name, a national builder, Toll. If Toll came in and wanted to build a first-class, high-level residential complex, it may well be that they would then be responsible for, in totality, the agreement. However, each specific deal requirement should get a development agreement from the city prior to the initiation of construction, and I'm sure, as I said to one of the counselors, no one in the industry is going to spend any real dollars till they know exactly what they can build. So, that agreement would be done right at the top. It would not wait until something's built, or you're ready to do a foundation, and you're looking for an agreement. It will be dealt with. We don't see that, and one of the concepts that we heard, which we totally disagree with, is that we need to do a development agreement prior to the approval of the overlay district. It is just problematic. There's too much left, and what would it say? Until you really are ready to get going in terms of what actually is going to be, not the picture, but what actually is going to be developed, that's when the agreement should be entered into. So, that's our position, and it's very clear. We found it unworkable if we had to get an overall master agreement, because I think we could spend a year arguing about what it says and doesn't say.
And, Madam Solicitor, you're the one who brought up the agreement, or Mr. May. Could we get the city's feedback on that position? Would it be okay to move forward with an overlay, with an agreement to enter into agreements before any building permits are pulled, or is the city saying, we, you know, that we want a master agreement up front?
I think you, the conversation that you both were able to have, and I certainly agree, the public is the place to have it. The conversation that you both were having, I think, is the exact reason why we need to start with a development agreement. Part of what you said was, we haven't had the foundations for a proper conversation. Part of what Attorney Burke said was, we don't yet know the full dynamics of the project, so we can't reduce it to writing. Those are the literal points of a development agreement. Not everything has to be specified with the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. It's okay to leave some parts where you have to come back to the table. Changing the zoning without a development agreement is doing it backwards. That doesn't provide the city, the stakeholder leverage it deserves in a conversation about development of almost 70 acres. And I used to live on Frost Ave, which runs into Thurber. I lived there when the casino was going to go there. The people over there deserve to be treated with respect, and those residents have lived there for a long time. We have, what has caused tension in getting here is that there hasn't been a description, description on what the industrial activities are going to be, or what the commercial activities are going to be. And not because we haven't asked, but because they do not yet know, which they're very transparent about that. So, I would suggest to you that parts of the project are premature to change the zoning, which is why internally, and in conversations with Attorney Burke, I was one of the people to suggest sequencing. Like, let's try and break this down so that it can move forward, but so that it can be done thoughtfully and appropriately and not rushed. Because right now is the time we have to create the development agreement, and he's absolutely right. It could take a year or longer. It doesn't have to if we break the project up and focus on what we need to focus on for the zoning changes that the project needs, because that's, that is how these public-private partnerships work. We have no control over the land, except for what grows in a development agreement or what you all put on as the zoning. And right now, it's C2. So, any commercial activities in C1 or C2 are allowed there. And I missed those statements for people who might not be familiar, or it wasn't clear. There are many iterations of an amendment floating around right now. The current iteration is an overlay, so it protects the current underlying uses, and it suggests an overlay of high-density residential housing. That does address Chief Nardelli's concerns, and some of the things that Chief Galligan raised. It addresses green space, and it says that 50%-- Buildings may include a portion not to exceed 50% of the total gross floor area to be used for any other allowable uses in the fairground overlay district. So, kind of to some of the points you're making, working off this draft that I know you haven't seen because it's new, that's there, and it's left there for this reason. People that live there deserve amenities. People that live there deserve, you know, the ability to have a mini-community inside their own. Like, I personally don't see anything wrong with that. Like, I grew up in Florida where subdivisions are all there are, and they're master-planned communities, and I've worked for one before. And so, I have a little bit of personal experience on what this could be if it's, if it's done right. And the folks that are here, their, you know, at least online footprint shows that they have tremendous success in high-quality turnkey residential development. So, that's where we started, to try to provide the greatest success for everybody that's involved, at least speaking for myself.
So, how much can that be accomplished through the overlay itself, and what can't be included in overlay that we would have to enter into an agreement on? Because you're saying about control of the land.
Yep.
Well, zoning is how the city, you know, I would say mainly controls development of a land.
It does.
So, how much of that can we put in the actual language of our zoning, and how much is not, you know, is outside of zoning and more agreed-upon issues like infrastructure or traffic or things to that effect?
I mean, to be frank with you, it includes, oops, hold on. It includes things like timelines, which don't exist in zoning. You know, it's a full-scale blueprint for what the city should expect from development of the project. And that doesn't, those, that's not really how the smaller-scale projects that are normal zoning deals with, that, they're just, they're kind of two different things, if you would, you know? So, the development agreement--
Now, how much of that agreement is macro, and how much are we expecting it to be micro? I mean, does it allow for flexibility? Are we just saying, out of those 1,500 units, because zoning wouldn't say 15, 40% or say 10% of those 1,500 have to be affordable, or something like that?
I would submit to you, and I'm going to look at my folks over here, we haven't had discussions of that granular nature yet, and I wouldn't feel comfortable with those type of details right now.
Okay.
Because I don't know what their plans are in terms of, you know, what type of housing, or who's going to live there, or what.
Are you saying that those details need to be addressed prior to us moving forward with an overlay?
Yes. So, the way that, the way that an overlay and development agreement work, at least in one perspective, which I hold, is that they're parallel, is we sort of have been trying to work on a zoning to put in front of you that the administration supports for you all to consider, that would get the developer a development agreement. So, that's kind of how they work together, is the development agreement says, if you get the zoning that the city is trying to get for you, because you all don't control, you know, your other six members, then here's the development agreement. The city's going to do A, B, and C for you, you're going to do D, E, and F for us, here's what project mitigation looks like, here's what happens when you sell a portion, here's how the overlay applies to either all of it or a portion of it. So, it's those details that, because they're not going to go to the ZBA, you know, or at least it's suggested that they go to site plan review after a threshold number of units is built, because the overlay dictates the project specifics.
So, those, but those are conversations between you as city solicitor, mayor as executive, our director of planner as, you know, in his role, that's not really an issue for us as the legislative body?
I don't, I don't think so. I see a lot of overlap, and I see a lot of opportunity. I mean, the ordinance draft itself contemplates a development agreement being necessary before any building permits issued.
Right. So, but that's macro language that then allows for continued conversations?
Well, that's not in many other instances of zoning.
Okay.
So--
Are there currently, are there currently any meetings on the books right now to discuss community agreement? I mean, this matter's been before us. I mean, this was, I believe, first read and referred back in November, October, November?
Summer.
Summer, back in August?
It was filed in July, I think.
Okay, July.
And I did not receive the September edited version that Attorney Burke talked about until this week. So, I'm not totally sure where you're going, and I don't know what you mean by community agreement, but I'm guessing--
Well, developer agreement, it's been referenced as community agreement, developer agreement.
Really, I would suggest that we've made more progress in terms of, you know, someone I worked with some time ago said, how do you eat a sandwich? A very rhetorical question, but the answer is, one bite at a time. And that is the framework I'm trying to bring to this project, so that it can be advanced, because the pressure's being felt everywhere for it not being advanced or not moving fast enough. So, when you say, when's the next meeting on the calendar? I can tell you, I spoke to Jim Burke on the phone yesterday, I spoke to him on the phone today. I can tell you, we had an internal meeting earlier this week, we had two internal meetings. I'm not really sure what you're looking for, but what I can tell you is, we are trying to figure out how to move it forward. And right now, it seems like the best option is residential. So, that's where we're at. So, there has been no development agreement, because until now, there has been very, you know, there just hasn't been a lot of agreement on where to go next. But I don't, I think we're in a better place.
Well, and I think that goes to Mr. Flynn's discussion about cohesion, and even Counselor Phil, sorry, my brain's a little fried right now, but about moving this process forward, right, in a timely manner, and doing it cohesively.
I think what's important for everybody to know is, we asked, who are your commercial partners, who are your industrial partners? And they don't know yet, and so then we don't know yet, and everybody deserves to know before you all decide to change the zoning, because you don't know who's going to go there. But there are people that are living there already right now, that do deserve to know. And that, and so instead of allowing that to continue to stall, because that did create a lot of latency to where we are now, it's, let's figure out what can we do, and this is what we can do.
Okay, so, I mean, there's been discussions, and again, there's been discussions about trying to move this process forward. We were talking about potentially continuing this matter for two weeks, so that we can get whatever draft that you're, that you're working on, so that we can take a look at that. But you're also saying that it would be improper for this council to move forward, or this committee to move forward on a overlay if you haven't entered into some sort of agreement. That agreement is beyond our control.
It is.
And so, how do we mesh these two things about moving this matter forward expeditiously, but also providing the protections that the city is saying that it needs before it feels comfortable, you know, allowing us to move forward with an overlay?
I think we continue what we're doing right now, which is having these conversations and figure out where it's going. We haven't done this yet, and this is just my opinion, is we haven't done this yet. So, no, Jim has not seen a development agreement, but no, we don't have to drag this out if we're focusing on a specific portion of the almost 70 acres, and there's a specific project that's attaching to it. What I would suggest is, the developer doesn't own the parcel anyway, so the landowner, who there are many, and they are corporations, they have to be signatories to the agreement. That is, to me, going to be the sticking part right now. I don't think we can't make significant work on it in two weeks. I think that's what you're asking to hear.
Right.
And I think I can affirmatively state, I'm confident we can make significant progress on it in two weeks.
Well, okay. I hope that happens, Madam Solicitor, if--
I appreciate the trust.
Yes. And let's, I mean, I'm hoping that we can get these meetings on the books and this discussion to start, because, you know, as Attorney Burke said, you know, we have a qualified, desirable developer, you know, who's willing to work with us, but I don't, you know, patience does eventually run low.
I have triplets. Patience is my middle name.
Well--
Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor, ma'am.
Yes, please.
Appreciate it. First, I want to say that I never have a problem, and I enjoy working with Attorney Bridges. And it is, I'm not suggesting it's an impossibility that there couldn't be some master-plan agreement that is vanilla enough to be executed to the point of meeting the standard that I think is being suggested by the department. Lack of communication sometimes is not a great thing, but let me help. We have not seen a proposed construction agreement. We have seen an outline from the planning department in terms of what they want before you approve the zoning. I'm going to give you some of them. We've got to fund drafting of a new zoning to support the advanced and agreed-upon development before zoning is adopted. I'm not even sure what that means, but funding, I do understand. We have to fund an infrastructure and utility plan to support and advance the agreed-upon development before zoning is adopted. We have no idea what the infrastructure plan is going to be. So, we can't possibly pay the $2,000, $300,000 to develop an infrastructure plan before you approve the zoning. I mean, that's a deal killer. That's gone. Fund independent, third-party review of studies and plans throughout the development process needed, so that we require the planning board as part of the site plan review, so it might as well agreed upon now. Certainly, there's always the opportunity, when we're looking at, for example, engineering plans on a specific site, to have a third-party review, but that is so overbroad as to cause any developer agita. Developer agrees not to build more than 50% of the permitted housing units until 100,000 square feet of fabrication building is substantially completed. With the state of the industrial and commercial business right now, there may well be no, as you put, light industrial buildings being built within the next two, three, four, five years, until we have a different economic market that is more receptive to it. This developer understands tech bio labs, they are so overbuilt right now in Somerville that you can't give them away. So, we're going to go ahead and bill some on spec here in Brockton? That's absolutely a deal killer, and it won't be financed by any individual bank.
And Attorney Burke, you don't have to go line by line, I think we get the point, but--
We also have to, what is it? We also have to renovate the Little Red School building before the development, the restoration and funding of the certificate of occupancy. You understand, that's not a market feasibility in terms of going forward, not for this guy, but for anybody.
Right. So, that's why I believe, let's hope this is an impetus to begin some sort of conversation, because we're going to be put in the situation where we're waiting for some other, some other act to happen before we're empowered to do our job, and, you know, I don't like being in that. I want to protect the city's interests here. I want this to be a project. I want to make sure that we're working within a, you know, an outline, and that there's no bait and switch here. But it seems like we can't do our job until some other job occurs, and that-- But it seems like we can't do our job until some other job occurs, and that, that becomes frustrating for a legislative body who really has an interest in getting this project moving forward. Please.
Thank you. And first of all, I just want to be clear, with regards to a lot of the technical statutory procedural, I certainly defer to Attorney Burke and Attorney Bridges. And so I just wanted to kind of, with some of the recent dialogue, just touch on kind of, as you say, from a macro standpoint. And I think, again, I know I articulated it in more detail at the beginning of the meeting, but just to kind of level set again, we wholeheartedly understand that there, there's, this has, this parcel, this project, we all have to get it right collectively. This is not just some half-acre parcel. This is not, this is a material, connective tissue catalyzing piece that's going to set the, the trajectory of Brockton for the next 50 years. That is the approach with which we came to this a year ago. And again, we're very grateful. I know, you know, in terms of whether it's from the Mayor's office, Attorney Bridges, Attorney Resnick, the various counselors, Cessar's office, DPW, CFO, Chief Nadelli, Chief Perez, Superintendent, Principal McCaskill, different religious groups, other groups, you know, we, Chamber, Old Colony Council, we, we have really enjoyed, I mean, there's probably been over 40 different parties and stakeholders who have engaged with it over the past year. And while it has felt disparate, fragmented at times, decentralized, I think we're okay with that, because we were able to get the raw feedback from all those different stakeholders. And, and that's great. And that, we wanted to introduce ourselves, we wanted to make ourselves available, we wanted to be in different, you know, different tranches of the city, whether it be political, economic, cultural, and so we really have made a concerted effort over the past year to do that. You know, I think, as you alluded to, Attorney Thompson, or sorry, Counselor Thompson, we're at a point now, and again, we're very grateful to Mr. May, Attorney Bridges, everybody, all the great work that's been done. And again, I'm not intimately familiar with the procedures of this committee, I defer to Attorney Burke for that. But, you know, I know folks are referencing this two-week window. I want to go on record, in front of everybody here in the public tonight, I will personally, myself, and with my entire, you know, seven-member management team, along with our architects, engineers, anybody else relevant to the discussion, we are willing to come to this building every single day for the next two weeks. And all, my one question that I want to leave here with tonight, or the one answer, one directive I want to leave with tonight is, what is the next step? And who do we call? And who in here can we keep in the loop? Because I want it all out in the open. I want this in a public forum. I'm not a fan of back rooms, smoky rooms, operating in the shadows. I want nothing more, and, and you know, I don't know what the right building is, or right room is in this building, but we will embed ourselves here, only if invited, for two weeks to get it done. And that's a commitment from our end, and again, back to what I asked for in the beginning, which is simple reciprocity. And I don't want to have to wake up tomorrow and wonder, which of the 40 people in my phone for the City of Brockton do I call to figure out the next step? I also don't want to sit for the next week and wait for my phone to ring. Nor should Attorney Burke, nor should anybody else on our team, nor should anybody else in this room. And so the only, you know, again, I don't know where this hearing goes procedurally. I defer to the committee and Attorney Burke and Attorney Bridges. But from a practical, pragmatic standpoint, all I want to leave with tonight is, tell me what the next step is, and tell me who our point of contact is going forward.
And that's not unreasonable, Mr. Flynn. I mean, that's, that's the only way to move forward, is one step at a time. How to eat that sandwich, one bite at a time. We, we all should know, leaving here, what is the next step? Because if we have a meeting on the books in two weeks, how do we, what, what's going to happen?
And, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. And then, so, I think if there is some sort of consensus that maybe taking this one step at a time, and maybe that is the best way forward, so we can actually get this process moving forward, if there is some consensus on moving forward with the residential aspect of this, then let's shrink it down. Let's focus on the residential aspect, not 2,500 units, or, you know, I'd say, within the existing framework that was already presented, that if we could move forward with the residential aspect, try to get into some agreement regarding residential, that will, that will, maybe it's more digestible, and, and we'll have more of an ability to move forward quickly if we, if we just move forward with that part. But that's not, I, I guess, you know, I don't know, I'm one vote, one voice. I, I'm not the guy who, who's going to be sitting down and pushing this forward. I like to be in the room, but, you know, that's, that's the function of the executive. And so, I'm hoping, at the end of this, that through our executive office can give you that direction. And give us direction, saying, "Hey, guys, we're meeting. We've decided that this is the pathway forward. When you come to your next meeting, you can be prepared to discuss this issue and start work, you know, working amendments or language regarding this specific issue." That way, I, I know what I can focus on, moving, moving forward. I think I feel like I'm in the same boat as you. I don't, my head's spinning. We got three different drafts. We have a draft that we haven't yet seen, where, where there's, there's conditions, there's conditions precedent before we can do our job. So I'm, I'm, please, let's get our act together. Let Mr. Flynn know, what is the next step in this process? And then inform us on how we're going to proceed, so I know what to look at for the next meeting, so I can be prepared for that meeting. I'm asking that same reciprocity that you're seeking.
Well, I appreciate it, Counselor, and I won't take much more time, because I want to be respectful of everyone's time this evening. But I'll just say, you know, thank you. And with regards to some of the things you referenced, resident, you know, we're open-minded on all of it. I, you know, I think one of the other frustrations, and this goes for both the private side as well as the city side, but, you know, within the hours before a hearing like this, all of a sudden drafts start, I mean, there's two drafts that I don't think I've even seen. And so, you know, in terms of residential, we, we are committed to moving this forward in an expeditious, but deliberate and measured manner. And I think there are different ways that can be done. You can bifurcate the uses, bifurcate the parcels. I'm not here to opine on that, because I don't like doing that on the fly. So all I, and similarly, I just want there to be a degree of accountability, because, you know, whenever, if there's another meeting in two weeks, which again, I'm not familiar with all the technicalities, I don't want brinksmanship, the 24 hours before that meeting of this flurry of, you know, activity, or synthetic manufactured activity, to act like people are working hard. I want there to be a, I want, I want to be held accountable, myself and my team, so tell us what you need from us. But I need there to be reciprocal accountability on the city's side. And if that means, let's meet tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning, I'll be here and I'll bring coffee. But I need concrete steps, and I can't operate in, you know, a windowless room with no, no few, no guidance. We have to put this on a linear trajectory. It's been going in a circle, and that's fine. I actually think it's healthy. The past year's been very organic. We've got input in, as I say, I've referenced this mosaic, this patchwork, that's great. And I think it's led to a lot of good, raw input. We've got to get this on a linear path. And that doesn't mean I'm looking for a rubber stamp. But we need it to be sequential and linear, because going in circles like this, you know, we're going to be sitting here in 20 years, and the fairgrounds is going to be, you know, you think it's bad now, wait till 20 more years of that.
Right.
So I say that all respectfully, and I just, I really would ask that before we all walk out of this room tonight, I would like a tangible next step. So thank you.
I don't find that unreasonable. I actually, I support that, and I hope that's how this matter ends today. Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Thank you, Mr. Burke, everybody here today. That's, that's my time. Mr. Chair.
Counselors, I asked Counselor Lally if I could ask a couple of, I think they'll either legal or procedural questions before we go forward. And I have a question for the Solicitor. Solicitor Bridges, did you send a request to either Attorney Burke or Mr. Flynn for a copy of any purchase and sales agreement that they might have for the fairgrounds? I'm trying to identify what actual legal link. We're here discussing changing zoning and doing all of these things. What legal tentacles exist, to your knowledge, between Mr. Flynn and the owner of these different parcels? Because you mentioned they're owned by, by corporations. And didn't you ask for something toward that, toward that end, to try to determine what their, their link was with these parcels?
The, after, well, it's, it is important that, to my knowledge, Copper Mill and Andrew Flynn don't own the parcels. And when the city was contemplating buying them, we did a title exam, we created the takings orders. So at that time, they were owned by BAS, I don't know, a cup, two or three different groups of folks, corporations. So that's part of a development agreement. Those were part of some of my comments, and.
But did you ask for a copy of a purchase and sales agreement, and did you receive a reply?
Right before, you know, everyone's frustrated, so I'm not personally going to participate or comment on some of the things that have been said. But what I can say is, after we met, the last time I met with the group, which I forget, was maybe in November, or something like that, like I said, it was my idea to, to lob off the residential to keep this thing going. And so, of course, I asked for a PNS. Of course, I said, okay, what are the, I've asked many times, what are the parameters of the land sale? Because the folks who are the developers are not the owners. I haven't gotten it, but I don't necessarily want that to be a distraction in this moment. Because at least in terms of who I am as a person, and what I do for work, and how I show up at work every day, is I am a hard worker, and I do do my work. So although maybe it feels like a flurry, I would suggest that, that is, that could be synonymous with progress, and either take it or leave it. And so here we are now. I forwarded you all a copy of the draft that's amended, that was built off of what Attorney Burke sent on Monday afternoon at 2:10. And that's where you are. So I would suggest that you all take a look at it. If I have permission, I'll send it over to Attorney Burke. And Attorney Burke and I work excellently together. I feel confident in saying that at the podium. So I invite you, Counselor Thompson, to whatever meeting you want to be in on this. If you'd like to be in on it, excellent. If not, that's okay, too. We can be back in here in two weeks and present to you what we've been able to hammer out. But until this point in time, there has not been consensus or agreement on how to move forward. And I think that we have that now. So, that's really.
And the, if you, if you will, the reason I ask that question, and I'm going to ask this question of you, and I hope Mr. May is listening, have you ever received, either of you, some type of comprehensive report from Copper Mill or anyone else saying that if the zoning is approved, we will build X number of units, they will be along this perimeter on these parcels, we will address infrastructure, we will do all of the different things that perhaps you might want to see in a project development agreement? Because I'm looking at an email from Mr. Flynn to, to Mr. May today, saying that we've been working on this, we meet regularly every day regarding this project, but we don't have any studies. We do all our own work and analysis in-house, and with our best-in-class design and engineering partners. I've never received one email from, from Copper Mill. And yet, the tone I'm getting is that somehow we are remiss in our duties, and that's why I'm bringing this up. That's why, and I, I'm asking Mr. May, have you ever received any type of a multi-page comprehensive report with any type of a chronological guideline as to construction, when it would start, how they think the, the plan will proceed? Is there a plan in your professional experience?
There is not.
There is no plan that has been submitted to you?
I'm hoping that we get to one.
I'm, I'm sorry?
I'm hoping that we get to one.
Okay. And, and so, I'm just going to leave this with, for those of us who perhaps are cautious, for those of us who perhaps are very protective of those 66 acres that are strategically located in, in the city, it's because I don't get a sense we're at the point yet where I'm just going to rezone property and hope for the best. And if that makes me too cautious, I'm sorry. But that's, that's where I am. And Counselor Lally, I'm sorry to take up a little bit of your time, but I, I think it's important to get some of this stuff out on the record, because the.
I'd appreciate it if we could have the opportunity to address your comment, Counselor.
Please do.
Great. First off, it, it, it's never part of a development program that you get a, a business term, purchase and sale agreement that you give to municipality to let them see and identify what is really proprietary matters. What the city does, and what I'm happy to do for you, is that there is a form that the Zoning Board of Appeals requires, from an owner, giving authorization for a municipality to deal with requested permits from a particular individual while something is under agreement or under lease. Be happy to give you that, from all of the owners of the property. Then you don't have any question of whether or not they have authority to discuss these issues with any representative of the community. Happy to do that. The second point is, have you ever received any promise to do the full infrastructure, whatever? Essentially, what you just described, Counselor, is a construction agreement or a development agreement that would already identify that you know exactly what you're going to take, the timing that it's going to take, what goes first, or what goes second? For example, one of the things in the master agreement that was suggested as an, as an option, or what they call an outline, was that we have to first develop all of the, what do you call those, two-unit condos or homes along Thurber Avenue, prior to beginning any other construction. Here's the reality. Until we go ahead and build the heart of the project, which is the large residential complex, there is no money to go ahead and build a full street down Thurber Avenue to create those duplexes. Financing, a bank would never give that to you under those circumstances. You have to get them a pathway for getting their money back. So essentially, it, it appears to me, or how we felt, the suggestion was that we had an obligation to somehow give you a clear development plan of every aspect of this project before we could ask for a zoning change.
Let me, I, that's not what I asked for.
Well, then what is it, Counselor?
What I'm suggesting to you is, and you were the one that was touting their experience with all this development.
Yes.
Couldn't someone put together a five-page report saying, "Our apartments will be this size. We will have X number of two-bedroom, X number of one-bedroom. We'll have X number of parking places. We'll address infrastructure. We'll make sure there's adequate lighting. There'll be pedestrian walkways between buildings. We will have some amenities because we realize we're bringing in a densely populated area." Just some rudimentary plan. You tell, you tell me where the plan is, other, other than a picture. Where is the plan in writing? Where was it submitted?
Go ahead.
To whom was it?
I've got a response, but my.
To whom was it submitted?
And I say this very respectfully. You know, we presented it at the planning board. We had our architects, our civil engineers, and our traffic engineers.
Here we are.
At the planning board. And then at the public meeting that was held at West Junior High, which I believe you were in attendance at, at that meeting, we had three representatives from CBT Architects who walked through all the different units, all the different green spaces, all the different open spaces. We then had our civil engineer from Bowler, one of whom is focused on infrastructure, roadways, curb cuts, access. And then a second engineer from Bowler, who's focused on utilities, water, power. And then we had our traffic engineer from MDM, who also did all of the casino work, and who the City of Brockton regularly hires and engages. And he presented a detailed analysis regarding the traffic generation, which showed it was going to be approximately 40% of the traffic that was going to be generated by the casino. So, you know, that, that information, and that expertise, that work has been done over the past year, it's been presented in various forums, we emailed that presentation around to everybody at the city. And, you know, if you'd like me to follow up with subsequent reports, I'd be happy to get those due this week.
So if, so just to be clear for the record, since you did it for the planning board, you don't have to do it for the ordinance committee? You feel you can wash your hands and say, "Well, the information is out there, you should know what it is, and the plan exists"? Did you hear the Director of Planning and Economic Development just stand up and say, "I've never seen a plan. I've never seen a formal plan"? Now, is he lying?
Counselor, respectfully.
No, I'm just.
You were in the room when it was presented at West Junior High.
Let me, let me ask the question. Do you believe that he's being disingenuous by saying, "I am the Director of Planning and Economic Development in the city, and I have never seen a plan for this project on 66 acres of land"?
First of all, I don't fully appreciate this dynamic right now.
Well, I.
And I will say, Counselor, if there's information you need, first of all, it is present, been presented to the planning board, it's presented to a meeting that you were at, it has certainly been presented in Rob May's office multiple times. If you're referring to Rob's email that he sent me today, late morning, requesting for reports, that I. reports, that I wasn't even in my office this afternoon, I'll send you anything and everything I got tomorrow.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
No, I, I'm done, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Ali. I'm very pleased. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would still do my, well, I meant to say his point of information. We did receive something from, at the beginning of the process, that indicated sort of a map, and, and, you know, changes in what the layout would look like. So I, I do think that, colleagues, you recall, I think the, I think the, I think the point that was, that was more centered around was that it was non-binding. I think that, what I think is that it's 8 o'clock, and I think that the start of the meeting to now, I think, indicates the, you know, both parties' positions and frustrations with the road taken on this. And I would agree with my colleague, Counselor Thompson, that, and Mr. Flynn, that this, you know, this is best done in this kind of a meeting, in the light of day. And so I'm glad that we have that opportunity now to have this discussion. And as far as I'm concerned, I am not going to regard any, you know, any, I'm throwing the whole thing out, and I'm starting now. And we're starting with what we've received, and, and how we, how we plan to go from there. And I think that's fairest, to, you know, to let go of, of everything, work as best as we can, as fast as we can, to make sure that something is produced in a reasonable amount of time, that is acceptable to the city. Because this is an important plot for us. This is the last real big spot we have. This is a very significant thing for this city, and I think some of our, our pressure, and, you know, R as a city, maybe not R as a council, but R as a city, some of our hesitation is making sure that we do it right. And there's some, some hesitancy. I think that we need to be very careful as a council, to do what we can to control the outcome, while not doing things we can't, or, or overreaching. I don't even know where to begin. I think what I'm gonna start with, Solicitor Bridges, if you don't mind, is a procedural question. The conversation has, has come to several times, splitting this, and, and giving what we can right now for residential to Copper Mill, and returning later for the rest of it. How do you split this? How does that, how is that done?
The plan, I'd welcome Attorney Burke at the mic, if he'd like to be, but the plans that I saw from, in an email from Attorney Burke on this subject, were this, I don't know what cardinal direction it is, but...
You wanna grab the mic?
West Street, Thurber, and I missed this, I'm not at the mic, but I missed this in the comments, too, is... The commer, the commercial buildings that already exist, up here, in this parcel, this parcel, and here, would remain as they are. There are leases in some of those spaces, and we didn't get into these type of details, but essentially...
Ma'am, could, just for the, I can hear you, but the folks at home...
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you're saying the, those top three properties right there stay?
So this is a parcel, this is a parcel, this is a parcel, this is a parcel. So, we've just been working on the language, so we, this is, this is the first idea that I've seen on the residential in terms of a carve-out. And it was at the city's request, so I wanna acknowledge that, but I just more wanna say that this is the first idea. So it would be this entire area, including this small parcel.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna put the mic down, and then pass these sheets out.
All right. Mr. Flynn, if I could get you for a second?
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for, thank you for coming. I wanna thank your team for, for making it down as well, and, you know, showing their support. Thank you. What kind of, you know, there's been discussion in the past, what, what are you, what are you looking at for a deadline? Where's the, where's the end of the road? You know, is there a legal or procedural thing? Is there a certain point on your calendar where you decide you're never gonna come back? What, what is the deadline for us?
I appreciate the question, and, you know, I always, I never wanna answer that with, you know, some complete binary approach, bright red line, but I will tell you that...
All right, so assuming...
And again, I defer to Mr. Burke on the statutory precision of it, but I think we need to be able to move forward in this first quarter. And I can't tell you, you know, that's not February 1st, it's not February 15th, but it's, it's, you know, probably by around March 1st. Something that's very important to us. Thank you. Thank you. And, and I don't wanna overs, but I do have, I'd be happy to leave some copies of our latest reports and presentations, for anyone who wants them.
If you, if you want to hand them to our clerk, we can, we can share them and figure that out. Attorney Burke?
Yes, sir.
If it is a statutory or procedural question, you're the man. What kind of, you know, deadline, is there a deadline statutorily?
Sure. And Attorney Resnick probably can help and assist you better, because we had a communication, I don't remember exactly what the date is, but there's a 90-day window from a public hearing with a planning board, in which this board must make a decision. I think, if I recall, the date is somewhere around March 6th. And I'm not exactly sure what the date is. So here's what happens. It isn't like it's the end of the world, but for us, it, it's getting close. If it doesn't happen by that statutory deadline, which is sometime in March, then we need to start all over again, as it relates to public hearings with the planning board, which we really don't want to do. So essentially, when, when my client says March 1st, we really wanna get to a point where everything that needs to be done is done, and, and the council can make a decision, one way or the other, approving a zoning ordinance by the early March. That's, that's our deadline.
Takes care of that. Okay, so I don't know who this would go to, I'll, I'll, I'll ask Director May. I haven't gotten you yet. And I'll, I'll, I'll call you, I'll be calling you back up, Attorney Burke, don't get too comfortable. Director, good evening. Infrastructure plan?
Yes, sir.
That did come up in Attorney Burke's statements.
Yes, sir.
I do love infrastructure.
I love it, yes.
And, you know, the chief did mention, you know, what we would, what we would wanna So what is, you know, the infrastructure, the infrastructure plan kills this, is what we, is what Attorney Burke said to Counselor Firewell. What is the scope of the infrastructure plan? What would it be? Why are we asking for it? And, and, you know, is there some way that gets hammered out? Because I'm, I'm trying to...
Be happy to enlighten you on that. We have all seen the pretty picture, and I do love the pretty picture. How many toilets are there gonna be? How many earth times are they gonna be flushed? Do we have the sewer capacity at the, the site? Maybe yes, maybe no. Do we have the water capacity there? What are we gonna do about storm drainage? How is the traffic going to access the property? And what kind of off-site improvements do we need to make on Forest Avenue, or on Belmont, or on the intersection at Forest and Belmont, and, or Forest and West? Those are all part of an infrastructure plan.
Okay. And how, how much, so I remember there being discussions, I believe in the fall, in which there were conversations about, you know, lighting, or, you know, putting traffic lights, or putting a roundabout in the, at the, at that brutal intersection by West Library. Is that something that requires the, you know, the level of, you know, detail that concerns Attorney Burke? Is there any kind of middle ground that can be reached there?
There is area for negotiation, but some of the things that are coming, gonna come out of this infrastructure study, plan, is, you heard the Chair of the Zoning Board say that left-hand turns on Belmont are impossible. And we may need to add a internal, some of us call it a suicide lane, but it's the continuous left-turn lane that comes up and down the way. In order to do that, we're gonna have to require a right-of-way. Now, do we acquire the right-of-way on the north side of the street, and have to take properties, existing businesses, homes? Or do we acquire right-of-way that's in the fairgrounds already? Who pays for that property? Is the plan, the, the current buildings, we might not be able to afford to build it right now, but we'll have to build it in the future. Do we have buildings that are built up against that lot line, and now we can't widen Belmont? You saw, when the casino plan came out, there was a, a new roundabout put in at Forest and West, which is a horrible, horrible intersection. That roundabout requires additional private land to make that happen. How do we acquire that? Our building's gonna be built on that spot, that we can no longer acquire that property. Those are the kinds of things that we need to discuss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Burke?
I can, I can suggest to you that, for example, stormwater management, which I think I heard. Stormwater management is specifically a function of what exactly you're going to build. So if you have a two- or three-acre site, and you have a seven-story building, and you have 202 parking spots, that's how you make a determination of what issues are related to the stormwater management. You can't do it now, when you don't know exactly what you're going to build. And if in fact, you are moving a, a, a structure, I, I mean, I heard about the, the street access. Understand, we understand that there is concern. So we met with the Old Colony Planning Council, in great detail, to work with them about, how can we join together to get them to work on federal funding for a portion of this product? We instigated those discussions.
Yeah.
We've already told them, and we told representatives of the city, for example, if you need a, a passing lane, say on Belmont Street or Forest Avenue, we are absolutely not adverse to a land donation to allow you to do that. Are we gonna build a road? Absolutely not. But yes, we, we would absolutely work with it. We met with the DPW head, and we talked about the issue of right around where West meets Forest Avenue, and there was discussion about a rotary. And if that rotary's ever gonna happen, it's gonna require now that you get some land from the developer. We talked about certainly working with them to donate the land, to make it happen. A, a reasonable amount to make it happen. But are we going to create the turnabout? No. So I, I don't know exactly how we can ever reach a satisfactory resolution. This is good, though. This is really good, because it's pointing up issues that may be fatal flaws.
We're, we're fleshing it out.
Yeah. It may be fatal flaws, because if we continue down this path, it can't get done. I mean, I, I understand, there's always a middle ground.
Attorney Burke? I have a couple more.
Yes, sir. Sorry, sir.
Yeah, we can parse that. All right, so that's gotta get figured out. Affected roads, this is, you know, so basically, it's stuff that you feel needs to come up at planning board, and stuff that the city feels needs to come up, so we can be comfortable with it now, and that's where the impasse is.
That's called site plan review. You're exactly right.
Yeah, that, that is where the impasse is.
Yep.
Okay. And this is much larger than a three- or four-acre project. I will eyeball that and confirm. Okay, so I, we kicked around a couple of times, conversation about residential. I have no problem if we want to split this and run the residential first, just to get something done, just to provide something for Copper Mill to sink their teeth into, show some sign of life. I think that the tax base is very important, if we can keep commercial, if we can keep Even, you know, even mixed use allows us to tax on a commercial level, which is still progress. So I wanna make sure we hold on to that. Now, there's something that you said, Attorney Burke, at one point, and I don't have the wider context, because I was reading a lot of things, but there's nothing finalized to look at. Partially because this is an overlay district, this isn't a plan. We're not approving a set plan, we're approving a district, of which things could be built within.
Right. You are not approving the project.
We are talking development agreement, and, Mr. Flynn, I appreciate your dedication to, you know, basically, practically having, having an office in here until this is done. Are you comfortable that Copper Mill and yourself, the proponents, would be on, for your part of this, be able to reach a satisfactory development agreement by the end of January?
I, I, I'm gonna give you a clear, honest answer.
Yeah.
From what I hear, it is being pushed as required points of perspective from the city.
From, from your end?
From the city's end, of what they're going to require.
I'll get the city next.
They, I, I don't see how it can happen.
At all?
No, I don't see how it can happen. We can't say, "Oh, yeah, we'll only lose 20% of what we really needed to do."
So, I gotta, I'm sorry to cut you off. If this can't happen, then what are we doing?
I, I, I think I tried to provide you with an alternative that made sense.
Right.
And that is, that we would go through the normal process, you know, when, when you took the, the west side of Brockton, you said it's gonna be residential. You didn't require a layout of all the streets. It's the same thing with this project. You're, you're going to develop it with an understandable plan. We've given you a plan, and, and that is, is focused on what is in the best interest of the developer. So, pretty good. May not be exactly done, but that's the idea. So the idea was, that we allow the site plan review process to go ahead, we get the zoning approved, and then we create individual project requirements in terms of construction development plans per project. That, that can work.
So, perfect. Thank you. Madam Solicitor, for the city's part, not related to, not related to Copper Mill at all, is the city prepared to commit the resources and time to arrive at a satisfactory agreement with the developer?
Of course we are. I respect and appreciate Attorney Burke's comments, but I would say a couple things.
Cool. I, I don't, yeah.
Rob's com, two things on Rob's comments. Rob's comments were sent many months ago, and received no response. So we're talking about all of this right now, for the first time, and they were, I'm so sorry. And they were predicated...
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm, I'm gonna, we're starting this over.
Right.
Because what we, where we are...
Thank you.
Is, I don't think anyone is satisfied with where we are. Because where we are is, I don't think anyone is satisfied with where we are, and I don't think that it's going to get any better by noting where we've been. So, I don't...
Well, thank you for saying that, because I don't want them to cloud the perception of the inability to make progress on a development agreement, because partially, the comments were also on the, what was filed originally for commercial and industrial. So the answer is yes. If we're focusing on residential, and at least from my perspective, no one's asking them to build a road. But if we need a part, if we need a part of the property that is over here for the roundabout or turnaround or whatever everyone seems to be agreeing on, I'm not an engineer, I do not know, but I do live in this neighborhood, we need to know that now. That's the part of, that's part of a development agreement. You're not getting that at Site Plan Review. And also, what's in front of you that was built upon what Attorney Burke created, who, you know, is a very established land use lawyer, among many other things, a great-grandpa, I hear. But it's 1,500 of units by right, no Site Plan Review. So I think that's important to note, is it's Site Plan Review or it's Project Review, and this is what's in front of you when you get a chance to look at it. There is no Planning Board. There is no subdivision control law. This is it, right now.
Right. And I'm not trying to defer.
No, no, but I more mean, you know, just putting all the cards out on the table.
Mr. Attorney Burke, is that true?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The grandpa part, not the land use lawyer.
The grandpa part.
No, I, you were nodding your head while Solicitor Bridges spoke, that we, you know, you would agree that, you know, if we're gonna take, and that is what you said, if we're gonna require land for part of it.
Sure.
Then that needs to be established, it should be established now, and it should be done now.
I don't have any problem with that. You're 100% correct.
I want to establish, and I know I'm going on, you know, a while myself, just from the parties here, while you're both conveniently at the podium, that, you know, we'll put a lot of effort onto, you know, meeting frequently and making sure that we get this done quickly but responsibly.
You can guarantee that the developer will put the time in, and I will work with them, and I have no doubt that Attorney Bridges will move as best the city can in trying to reach a resolution. The problem is, what do we do when we hit Point A, which is absolute non-starter?
Well, then, we, you flex your land use muscles, and that gets hammered out. And yes, Attorney Bridges is easily one of the best solicitors, city solicitors I've ever worked with. So, yeah, I don't think I can get much more out of this without starting to repeat myself, but the original hangups that I do recall were the number of units, which seems to be 1,500, the parking spaces per unit, which was at 1, 1 and 1/4, which I personally believe should be up closer to 2, in relations to the housing problems that people are having nowadays, myself included. We're often finding more than one person in a dwelling. And I see a face made, so I will establish that, I mean, that there's not really enough housing stock for people in my generation to buy anything new, so we're stuck at home. But you're probably going to need, on average, more than one car per unit. Seven stories, I like it. I like that we're building up. I like that that's something that's going to start. Area frontage depth, I think, needs to be established in detail, well, based off of the original. Again, I'm going back to the original. But that's what I've, what I've got. This is very important. This is a very significant parcel for the city, and this means a tremendous amount to our future. And that is, I think, part of the reason for why we are here the way we are, and why we're here feeling the way we are. And I trust, and I know, that, you know, the folks in the city who are representing the city, not, you know, as councilors, but also as department heads and trained professionals, they're looking out for the city. They want to make sure that when this is done, you know, 20 years from now, just as Mr. Flynn would want as well, I know from our conversations and from his testimony, everyone here wants to be able to drive by that and say, isn't it great how this turned out? So what we need is, we need to get this done. We need to get it done responsibly, but we need to get it done. If we can cleave off part of this and get the housing going, I'm okay. There was talk about postponement to a date certain, which would have to be followed by the Ordinance Committee. I know the Ordinance Committee will, as all committees, be undergoing some changes as of Monday, but the date certain holds for them. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman. I'm starting to circle, and it's getting late. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lally. Counselor Nacastro, go ahead.
Do you have anything?
No, go ahead. I'll go after you.
Want me to go? Okay. Good evening. Well, I came here tonight prepared to talk about the ordinance that was filed in July, okay? And I've been ready to talk about it since August 12th, because I sat down and pulled it apart, and wrote up a list of concerns. And this is the plan that is supposed to be in front of us, because this is a plan that was attached to the ordinance, okay? So any of these other things that were shown, they're not part, they might conceptually be what we're hoping for, what we desire, but this is the plan we're talking about. And it lacks the specificity of other overlay district plans that I've seen. And I've been, I've been a real estate attorney for over 40 years, and I'm not the evil crone that you might have heard about, that I understand has been passed by various people involved in this transaction. I actually do my research. I try very hard. I've had a lot of development in my ward in the last couple of years. I try very hard to understand what I'm talking about, and to mostly ask questions that I know the answers to. But I want to give you a couple of observations about this ordinance that I was so concerned we were going to be talking about tonight. It refers to mixed use, but it does not require mixed use. It refers to light industrial, but it allows heavy industrial, okay? It talks about all commercial industrial uses being by Site Plan Review, but they have to be by special permit. That might not be popular with all of you. But that's really necessary, because our Site Plan Review ordinance does not allow anything to be denied. It allows you to approve or approve with conditions. It does not allow to be denied. And we will need the ability to come down on something. We don't want a strip club there. We don't want a Walmart distribution center. I noticed that some of your consultants are the captive consultants for Walmart, so I had to get that in there. I'm very relieved that we're working on something else, but that's not what we came here to work on tonight. It's been very important and perhaps cathartic for us to talk about all of this. And I'm committed to coming back as often as I have to, to talk about this. This is a great piece of property in the middle of our city. It's on Belmont Street, which has become like the main drag into our city. I really want to see this happen. I really want to see a master development plan. I understand and I appreciate the need to do it and to give you something, and to start the residential, and perhaps there is financing out there for residential, and certainly, the state needs more residential. But I want, I want an idea through a master development plan of what you're looking for, of what you think can happen here. You've got experience in Somerville and in other places. I'm sure they asked for a master development plan, and I'm just surprised that it has not advanced in all the months since a draft went out. All of the issues that Attorney Burke read from a month's ago email from Rob May, they're negotiable. They're negotiable, but no one came back to the table with them. I'm aware of that. I hope everyone else is aware of that, too. The other thing is, there's no requirement in this document that you build the conceptual plan that you're showing. And that's really very important, because that means you can show us anything and build something else. So it could be, it could be construed, and I'm not accusing you of this, but it could be construed as a bait and switch. So I want to see this happen. I want, but I want to see specifically, more specificity on what you want to do, what you're seeing for here. We're looking for, as you're aware, we're looking for a study of what is possible here, prepared by experts. We've asked you for something, for something like that. You haven't done it. We're also going to be looking for a study from you of what are the impacts on our community. Now, I'll tell you, Abington, right now, has a proposal in front of it for a 100-unit apartment complex, and they asked for a fiscal study. Everybody wants to know, and it's not unreasonable, this is asked for all over the state, and everywhere except Brockton, it's like standard, but everybody wants to know, well, what are you projecting out if you have this many units? How many children will come from it? How many cars? How many Amazon delivery trucks? And so on and so forth. This is a totally appropriate thing for us to ask for. In any other place but Brockton, as I said, it would be okay, fine. But we seem to be hitting bumps with this. I want to see this happen. I'll come back in two weeks. I'll come back in a week, if you want to talk some more. But I'm really glad you're not going with this. I do think, I do think that commercial, I think some kind of light industrial with, you know, delineated in what it is, I think that's appropriate here. I do want to see something like that. We do need the increased taxes. But you know, progress is in the details. And the worst thing of all would be to approve something and then live to regret the day that we approved it. And so, I'm committed to working with you. I think we can do better than this. Let me know how I can help. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Texera. Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may respond, I first want to compliment you, Counselor, because...
You surprised?
No, 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 no. Because you do diligently look at and work on these problems. I've got a number of projects with you. Sometimes, we haven't agreed, but you put the time in, you investigate, you do your best. So that's a congratulations to you and to the representatives of Ward 4, or the individuals of Ward 4.
Now, is the other shoe going to drop?
Nope. I will tell you, in terms of the plan that you showed me, we don't, and I think Attorney Resnick was educating me, because in the day, you used to have to submit a meets-and-bounds plan with a zoning change. You don't do that anymore. We submitted it anyways. I made them spend the money when they didn't need to, and it shows the entire site. What you do is, you need to provide a meets-and-bounds description, which we did do. So the plan that you have is all that you'd ever expect. The next thing is part of the problem that we just have to deal with. No, there's nothing on that plan that talks about this, because when you vote, you vote not on a development plan, you vote on a zoning change. And that's essentially what it is. It isn't, if you approve it, they will come, but you look at terms of the experts, they are the experts in terms of whether or not this makes sense and will work. In terms of whether or not there are impacts that are a problem, I really have to raise the question. We were told that we had to have 30B consultants do work for the city of Brockton, and we were told that it would be done by Christmas. And those consultants hired by you were going to discuss impacts. I raised some question of the benefit to the community, because whenever a consultant gets involved in this process, what it does is, it looks at all the potential problems and lists all the potential problems that come up, but it's never going to give you a pathway or a plan. So, but the question is, where are these, where's the report? That was going to be in, that was sent out, there was an RFP, two people were hired, where are the reports?
I hear they're coming.
I think they're relevant. I absolutely think they're relevant. We may disagree with them totally, but I think they're relevant.
Sure they are.
So, but the onus wasn't on the developer to provide those.
Right.
And we're happy the city did, and we're happy to work with the results and take a look, critique them as best we can, respond as best we can. But I think, in good faith, the developer has tried the best he can to move the project along. There is, there are no finger-pointing on what the problem is and if there has been a breakdown. Because I agree with what Counsel Lally says, in order to function at all in this, we got to start from the beginning and move forward. So, we'll do that.
It sounds like you are.
And we're happy to work with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Counselor.
I'd just say, Counselor, I appreciate your perspective and your acumen and your expertise in the field, and honestly, I would welcome nothing more than engaging in the granular details. I'm a bit of a nerd at heart, and so I would love to engage in the technical details, the real estate-centric details, the derivative impacts that it has through schools and others, but I just, yes, all I would ask is, I will make myself available, and to the extent you have any questions, or it would be helpful to meet with you and have a working session, I'm happy to do so, and I welcome, I would rather have somebody who understands the details than, you know, the opposite. So, thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Texera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Flynn, to come to Brockton. You're going to invest about $600 to $1 billion, $600 million to $1 billion. Our city definitely needs, our city definitely needs the deficit for the taxpayer. But it has to come from the top. We all have to come on the same table, the roundtable, and discuss, not to come here and finger-point to anyone. As an investor, I will definitely, I'll take my hat for you to have that courage to come here and say, you know what, I'm going to put $600 million to $1 billion in a city. That's not easy to do business. Let's put it this way. It's not easy to do business. Anybody that wants to come here with that kind of money, I will do it right, do it right for the city, and protect the city also. I'll have my limo at the airport, picking up these investors and say, come on, I'm driving you to Brockton. You're going to come with that kind of money to Brockton? Definitely. And I hear my colleagues, we all have concern. We want it done right, and not have any hiccups. That's what we need to say with the develop, planning, solicitor, the mayor, and let's sit in the roundtable and say, how can we do it? But I know there's a timeframe. We don't want to drag. We want to make sure it's done by that timeframe. And on my behalf, I will definitely, I'll support, as long as it's done right by the planning and your team and the mayor, with his inputs and solicitor, make sure all the work is done. But, you know, we need to understand, the city doesn't own the own leverage that we have, it's the zoning. Because we don't, the city doesn't own this piece of property. So if you decide not to go forward, Mr. Conick can just turn around and say, okay, I'm going to pull Super Walmart. Who's going to stop him? By right, he can. And if Super Walmart comes in there, the surround business can just shut their door, and there'll be a lot of business going out, because they can do whatever they want. But thank you for coming to Brockton, and we'll get it right.
And thank you, Counselor, and again, to the whole counsel. And I want to reiterate, it is not about finger-pointing. It is not an us-first, we truly are in it together. And again, as I said in the beginning, I can understand your inherent skepticism, and that we, you know, I hope we've started to earn trust and credibility over the past year. And I say this lovingly, any New Yorkers in the room, if we were some jerks from New York flying here on a plane for an ordinance meeting once a month, I would run us out of the room. But we truly, I assure you at a personal level, we have pure intentions. It doesn't mean we're perfect. It doesn't mean we're not going to have dis... mean we're perfect, it doesn't mean we're not gonna have disagreements amongst folks in this room, but please, we, we want this, we are all aligned, and we wanna be on the same team here. And so, I just, I ask that, and I ask all of us to take a bit of the tension out of the discussion, not only tonight, but going forward, and please view us as a partner and, and, and an advocate, not as, not as somebody, not as, not as anything else. So, thank you.
Yeah, but that's what makes it better, though, when we have this kind of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Thompson, you have something briefly?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, just briefly. You know, we, we said at the end of this conversation, we wanted to understand what is the path forward. Mr. May or Counselor, Solicitor, who's the, who's the point of contact? Who's gonna, who's going to be running the point of contact to be, to further this process through the, through City Hall? Who's the point of contact?
Brad?
We're all doing our best to work together.
Right, but I mean, a phone call is gonna be made tomorrow. Who does he call?
I'm pretty sure, I said at the podium, I spoke to Jim yesterday and today. So, I stay in my lane, I have my role, I'm doing my part. I'd love to talk to Jim. In terms of being voluntold, the mayor designated Rob.
Why don't you make a motion to request that the Director of Planning and Economic Development be the point of contact?
I mean, is that something we can do? Mr. Mayor, you, I mean, who, would you, would you accept the phone call tomorrow to begin the, the overall conversation to, to, you know, get this, the meeting that we're requesting on the books and denote the people who need to be in that room to accomplish the goals that you're seeking to accomplish? Can, can Mr. Flynn call you? Are you the point of contact here?
I am the point of contact. I am available, I would be available to take this call. It might be easier to set up a meeting date tonight, I'm traveling tomorrow, but I'm available for the call.
Okay.
Okay, well, then, at least we, we have a contact person. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Nacastro, and then Counselor Lally.
Thank you. Very quickly, in 2023, I served as the City Council President. What a thankless task that was. And I got to be in a lot of meetings with, with the mayor and his department heads, and what came to us at the beginning of my reign was the opportunity to buy the fairgrounds. And I just thought that was a wonderful opportunity, and I still think it is, and I'm kind of sad we're not able to do it. And I participated in many meetings to make that happen. Unfortunately, we had financial reversals in our school department, most people know about it, and we weren't able to afford it. But during the pendency of that happening and us figuring that out, Chris Carney, very generously, he reminded me of this tonight, they were willing to take down the grandstand, which they did, they bulldozed it and it came down in no time at all, as a show of good faith. And the city truly, all the city officials that I met with, truly had the best of intentions to buy this, to, to buy the fairgrounds, to acquire it. And it was a real crusher that we were not able to do it, but I just wanna acknowledge, Chris mentioned it to me tonight, and it's worth mentioning, that they did that, they stepped up and did that for us, and they acted in good faith, and I greatly appreciated it, and I think everyone else did, too. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Thank you. Counselor Lally?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be quicker, respectfully. Mr. May, as the newly christened point of contact, and Mr. Flynn, I'm going to ask both of you, and, or Mr. Burke on Mr. Flynn's behalf, but, you know, Mr. Flynn or any one of your very patient team, to please both send us updates as they occur. And when I say us, I, I, I think we could widen this to the whole City Council, but, you know, hey, we had a meeting, we got this done. Hey, we had a meeting, this is a bit of a, a stopping point, we're gonna figure this out. You know, nothing detailed, I don't need minutes, but, you know, an update to us, so we, we get it, and we know you're both on the same page, and it's a sign to us that, you know, you are meeting and something is getting done, which I think will make us a lot more comfortable with this proceeding.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor, and you have my commitment to that, and I truly do enjoy working with Attorney Bridges and Mr. May, and you have my commitment from that going forward, and I think we, we wanna converge it all into one arena. I will say, though, just for the avoidance of doubt, anybody in this room, I think almost everybody has my personal cell phone, my personal email, my chief of staff's information, I am available to anybody and everybody. I would prefer it be in a public forum and in a group setting, but if any counselors ever feel that they need access, or, you know, they wanna convene a meeting, please let me know, I'm always available. So, thank you to everybody for your time tonight, I really, really appreciate it, and I, you know, progress comes in different forms, and I do think progress was made tonight. So, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for hosting us tonight.
Just to remind the, the committee and several city department heads, we've created a Google Drive folder that has all of the fairgrounds' information on it, including presentations that have been made by the proponent, meeting minutes, everything that you could possibly want, it, in regards to discussions that I've had, are in that folder for everybody to use. And just FYI, I have already booked the G A R room from 9:00 to 10:30 for Monday morning, and will invite, if, if that is available for you, we'll also invite some relevant folks from our side.
Perfect. He, he did say he needed an hour heads up, so you've given him a weekend. Very generous director. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flynn, I, I'd like to maybe close this out by saying to you, I support the housing project, I support light industrial commercial. I, I wanna reference something that has nothing to do with you, but it happened back in 2014, 2015, before Counselor Lally and I were elected. Someone came forth with a great plan for a sports complex, and they were going to do wonderful things, and they were going to develop this parcel of land. There was no development agreement. Unfortunately, the law department at that time and the chief executive of, at that time maybe felt it wasn't necessary, but we ended up with nothing.
A gravel pit.
We ended up with a gravel pit. A true story. As a matter of fact, I think somebody's here that will, lives next to it. So, the reason why, and I'm just speaking for myself, when I put my name and my vote on something, I always want to be able to defend that later on, and when I'm no longer on this earth, I don't want somebody walking up to my granddaughter and say, you know, your, your grandfather was the one that set in motion that, that terrible project at the fairgrounds. So, if, if you mistook my passion for anger, I hope you will forgive me. What I would like to see come out of this meeting, but it's up to a vote of the, the group, I'd like us to request that our legislative council and our solicitor and Mr. May and Attorney Burke meet and come back here in two weeks, two weeks from today. Whoever is on the ordinance committee, there, there will be another ordinance committee, it may be some of us, all of us, none of us, and then have a, an amended ordinance that can be recommended favorably to the full City Council. I know the intellect that we have in our law department, I certainly, I certainly know Attorney Burke's intellect, I know Attorney Resnick's, there, there really, there really is no reason that can't be done, but I, but I do think it's a, a good foundation for standing up before the public and saying that we took one of the things that Brockton is known for. I mean, we're known for boxing in the shoe industry, a D W Field Park, but a lot of people, thousands of people know the Brockton fairgrounds. And so, we're dealing with a, really a unique piece of property that it's, it's unlike any other, and so I think that's why many of us wanna make sure we absolutely do this right. And by the way, if we do this right, 50 years from now, you're gonna be remembered for, because you, it will be a signature piece, a signature achievement by Copper Mill if, if we do this right. So, counselors, that would be the chair's suggestion, I don't know if legislative council or the solicitor wanna weigh in on that, but come back, set the date, two weeks from tonight, the ordinance committee, whoever it is, comes back, they finalize it, we de-politicize it, let, let them work this out. Let's take the politics out of it, let's let the professionals in the, in the law department and the planning department and, and Attorney Burke figure out what needs to be done and then, and then go forward. So, but it's up to, it's up to this group through a, through a motion or a vote.
Make a motion to postpone the ordinance committee meeting until Wednesday, January...
22nd.
It's 22nd.
January.
January. Did I say January?
22nd.
22nd.
Second.
6 o'clock here in this council chambers.
With, with the request that I outlined, is that acceptable to you, that those parties get together?
Yeah, very better, yes, definitely. Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor? All opposed? It is a vote.
Mr. Chairman, just, and I will keep it very short, but I just to acknowledge or to, to address what you said, you know, my friend here who's sat so patiently for the past three hours, she filled me in on the project you've referenced with the sports complex and the gravel pit. She filled me in on that probably back in July or August, the first time we met, and it's something that has stuck with me, and I completely understand the concerns and the scar tissue that a situation like that can cause, and, you know, we wanna ensure that does not happen here, and you have my personal commitment, but we also wanna make sure you have the comfort from a zoning standpoint. So, thank you, and we look forward to seeing everyone in two weeks.
Thanks.
Well, you know, politicians can screw a lot of things up, but this one I don't wanna screw up.
Let's not screw it up.
I want this one done right, so.
All right, absolutely. Thank you, Chairman.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.